Amen.
Amen.
Again, thank you, board members, spray, and to the entire board for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you remain standing for the presentation of colors by the Bayshore High School Color Guard, members Jessica Cruz Urbano.
Forward, march.
Dulcie Lopez, Nahomi Ramirez, and Stephanie Ricardo.
Mark time, march. Colors, halt. Left, face. Present, arms.
If you join me in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Right, face. Forward, march.
Thank you, may be seated. All right, that moves us on to item number six on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And the chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five Agenda, updated April twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, and posted to the district website, manateeschools.net. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and my granite kiss doesn't show any place to vote.
Mine doesn't either.
Mine does.
I'm gonna sign out and sign back in.
Yeah, reboot.
We'll go ahead and do it manually. All those in favor of the approval of the agenda, raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero.
Here we go.
All right, item number seven, approval of the minutes. Superintendent Weisong.
Good evening, Chair Cho and board members. I recommend approval of the minutes from the March fourteenth, two thousand twenty five special school board meeting, the March fourteenth, two thousand twenty five school board workshop, the April eighth, two thousand twenty five school board meeting, and the April eighth, two thousand twenty five school board workshop.
So moved.
I'll second.
My granite kiss is back up and rolling. Everybody else good?
I am not on yet, but.
Not on yet? All right, so let's go ahead and vote manually, again, the old fashioned way, approval of the minutes. Go ahead and raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, passes five to zero. All right, Mr. Barber. Item number eight, student celebrations. Best time of the meeting, come on up. You got a lot of them.
Yeah, we do. Thank you, Mr. Board Chair, board members, and Superintendent Weisong. Yeah, this is a special night. We're down to the last part of the school year, and this is really our best opportunity to invite our students in to be recognized before the school year ends. And we have a real special student to recognize. First off, and you know, from time to time, people retire from the district, and we have an organization here in town, the Manatee County Retired Educators Association, and they sponsor a special essay contest. To tell us a little bit about that is a member of the Manatee County Retired Educators Association and the chairman of this contest, and it's Chris Williamson. So, thank you.
I am Chris Williamson, and I am the chairperson for the Manatee County Retired Educators Fifth Grade Essay Contest. And our organization promotes activities like the Fifth Grade Essay Contest to get the students of Manatee County involved in writing essays. And we also do scholarships for future teachers, so we're really involved in that. We really want to do that. Our teachers, every year, we do the Fifth Grade Essay Contest and open it up so that they can have their students write an essay, and we always have the same topic for the essay. And that topic is an experience with a grandparent or an older adult who has influenced their life in a positive way. And Mark has done an absolutely awesome job with that essay, and you will find that out in just a little bit. Our winning students win gift cards and get their certificates, and we also have the teachers get a gift card, the same as the students get, so we honor our teachers also. So we are so very, very proud of Mark. Not only did he win first place in Manatee County for this essay contest, he won third place in the entire state of Florida. So at this time, I would like Principal Kathy Price to come up and talk about Mark.
It has been a pleasure working with you and your board, so thank you. Mark had me at hello six years ago. Walked into Willis together, so Mark, come on over here a little bit, just to explain the type of student that Mark is. He was so concerned, today is his younger sister's birthday, Georgia, right? He was so concerned that this was going to impact her birthday celebration. And we had to reassure him that it was not, we can do both, right? So Mark is going to read to you his essay about chess with his grandmother, and I want to thank Mrs. Tomlin, his teacher who is here. She is our math and science teacher, but she also is here for other recognitions later on as well. So we have a lot going on at Willis, right? All right, please welcome Mark to read his essay.
An especially important and beloved memory I have with a grandparent is with my grandmother who taught me how to play chess. I can still remember sitting down on the floor of my room with my grandmother after I told her that I wanted to play chess. She told me that she would teach me everything she knew. We started with the pieces and how to set up the board. First, there are the pawns, she said. They can move two spaces in the beginning, but after their first moves they moved, they can only move one space and can attack other pieces when they are one square diagonal and below them. They, when they reach the end of the board, they can be turned into any piece except for the king. We did the same thing with every other piece. The knight goes in an L shape, the bishop goes diagonal, the king can move one space in every direction, and so on. This went on until I fully understood the names of the pieces and how they moved. Next, we started practicing. I won some games and lost others, and I had a lot of fun playing with her. We shared laughs with each other, and we have spent a lot of quality time together. We played as much as we could, and since no one else in my family knows how to play chess, it has become a special thing for just the two of us. We play lots of board games together, but chess will always be my favorite because it's something special for just the two of us. As we kept playing, I got better and learned tactics. If I let my grandma take a piece, I, with the proper positioning, I could use one of my pieces to take hers and sometimes even win the game. Now I am trying to learn openings and new tactics to beat more advanced opponents. I am very grateful that my grandma helped me how to play chess. In this way, she taught me how to be patient, to strategize, and to look at my surroundings. This has really impacted my life in a great way and brought me closer to my grandma and some of my other friends that play chess. I will never forget how she took the time to teach me how to play this game and how it helped me grow closer to her. I didn't just learn chess. I learned that my grandma and I have something in common that was special for just the two of us. That is truly the reason which what makes this my favorite memory with a grandparent.
Mark, that was great, and it was really nice to hear about your grandmother. Could you also introduce us to your parents who are standing back there?
Uh, that's my mom over there, her name is Jennifer, and in fact, that is my dad, Mark the Fourth. And right there, uh, the birthday girl, my mom.
Happy birthday! Doctor, we're gonna take a photo with the school board in the background. Hey, John Mark.
Happy birthday to you. I'll spare everyone my singing.
Okay, so this next, it just keeps getting better and better. This next award is really a national award. We have a student, a senior at Lakewood Ranch High School, Addison Shea, and she attended a special event in Washington, D.C., hosted by America's longest-running and most distinguished science and math competition. It's called the Regeneron Science Talent Search. And there were forty finalists from across the country, including Ms. Shea, and they were honored during an award ceremony at the National Building Museum in Washington, where they received more than one point eight million dollars in prizes for their groundbreaking research, exceptional problem-solving skills, and potential to shape the future of STEM. Ms. Shea received twenty-five thousand dollars as a finalist and joins a distinguished groups of Science Talent Search alumni who have gone on to achieve world-changing careers and esteemed honors, including the Nobel Prize, the National Medal of Science, and the MacArthur Fellowship. So, wow.
I'm gonna ask Lakewood Ranch Assistant Principal Thomas Bellantonio to come and say a few words about Addison.
Well, you pretty much heard it all from her credentials. I mean, I'd be hard pressed to even compare my credentials to that, but Addison is absolutely amazing. I met her last year for the first time, interviewing her for a district-wide scholarship, and I was quite impressed with, you know, all the things she contributes to our campus, the culture, as well as an ambassador to our other students. And I think it's a testament to our own education of both STEM and STEAM programs that we've invested so much time and resources for. So give it up for Addison Shea.
Hi there, thank you all for having me tonight. It was just such an incredible experience to get to go to Washington, D.C. last month. I had this opportunity to meet a number of remarkable people, both scientists and professionals, as well as peers. And I would really like to thank my AP Research teacher, Mrs. Harper, because she was such an incredible mentor for me throughout this process, and I wouldn't be here without her. I'm here tonight with my mom, Julie Shea, and my dad, Ty Shea, so thank you all.
Welcome.
Anybody in the family having a birthday? All right, but thank you for coming. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Very awesome. As I said, it just keeps getting better and better. Right now, we're gonna introduce the winners on.
Math Superstars, so.
Math.
I think maybe we didn't this picture. I don't think we did that picture.
Okay, good.
All right, I think most of y'all are familiar with the Math Superstars Competition. Took place at the, hang on one second. It took place at the Brayton Area Convention Center on April fifth, and we had a tremendous event and some really stellar, you know, students involved in it. So I want to introduce to, tell us more about it, the Director of Elementary Curriculum and Instruction, Allison Nichols. So Allison.
Hi, good evening, Chair Cho, board members, Superintendent Weisong. So we're excited to have here tonight our top three winning teams from both elementary and for the first time this year, middle school. So we've been running Math Superstars for twenty-six years, so we're on our twenty-six annual competition. Typically, it's only been elementary, and this year, we decided we wanted to expand to sixth graders in middle school. So it was kind of an exciting competition this year with that addition. We do have a quick video to kind of show you the highlights from the competition. Welcome, my name is Allison Nichols. I'm the Director for Elementary Curriculum and Instruction, and it is my privilege to welcome the families, our Math Superstars, and all of our guests to the twenty-six annual Math Superstars Competition. I want to give a special thank you to our students representing thirty-three district elementary schools, and for the first time, we are proud to include sixth graders from ten middle schools in our Math Superstars Competition. Math Superstars is a competition where schools can send two students per school to represent their team. They come and compete in a forty-five-minute math test using their problem-solving skills. They work together in partners. They're given a booklet with questions that are very difficult for them to do, really problem-solving, so they're working together to answer those questions. They're talking it out with each other, bouncing ideas off of it, using math terminology to really increase their vocabulary and really learning to persevere while they're doing their math. A lot of our kids have opportunities to be engaged in extracurricular activities. This is another avenue for our students to compete and challenge themselves academically.
Yeah, first I was just really nervous because I was like, I don't know if I'm gonna do good. Like, I don't know how much time I'm gonna have, but now that it's over, I feel a lot better about it.
And our first-place gold is Lee Middle School.
I think it shows them that they can compete at higher levels and challenge themselves academically, and it encourages them to tackle hard things. All right, so all of our teams that were there, you know, again, that perseverance, the teamwork, that really is what was highlighted that day. But we're here tonight to honor our top three teams. We do have a trophy, it's a traveling trophy that the first-place team from both the middle school and then the elementary school will get to keep at their school for the year. The school's name is added to the trophy, so you'll see on the elementary trophy, there's lots of school names and student names on that one, but the middle school trophy, for the first time, we're adding the very first name, and we're excited to grow the names on that trophy over the next lots of years. So I will turn it over to Don Becker, our K-five math curriculum specialist, and she will introduce our elementary teams, and then Renee Wittenbrooke, who is our secondary math coordinator, will introduce our middle school teams.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to recognize our third-place finishers. Our third-place finishers represented Gullett Elementary. We have Liam Urendal, and we have Celine De La Cruz. Our second-place team is representing Samusett Elementary. We have Vienn Ramru and Alvin Velasquez. And our first-place team is representing Willis Elementary. We have Liliana Sheahan and Jofia Dow. Girls' names are engraved on the trophy as well. Congratulations, girls. And now I'll introduce Renee Wittenbrooke.
All right, it was exciting to have middle school for the first time this year. So I'm going to introduce our third-place winner from Brayden River Middle School. We have Kinsley Ross, and unfortunately, Andrew Wong cannot be here, but. Second place was our team from Mona Jane Middle School. We have Luca Ibrig and Matthew Lowe. And our first-place team is from Electa Lee Middle. We have Matthew Crosby and Wesley Ray. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Good job, Superstars.
I just wanted to say, if parents in the crowd, if you would like to stand up.
Parents, take a bow.
And then any teachers that are here, if you could raise your hands and let us see. Thank you guys for coming down and.
Can we do a parents, can we do a parent superstar, Math Superstars? I know I lost my kids real early.
But thank you guys for coming, and I know you're looking forward to a good summer, but you've still got some work to do.
Congratulations.
Good chat.
Well done.
Congratulations. Good job, Superstars.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Room clear. Uh, second round playoffs. Are they not regional quarterfinals? No, gotcha, gotcha. Regional, no, excuse me, regional semi.
Okay, cool.
Tomorrow, next, or Friday.
Oh, semi.
They play plant on Friday in the regional final.
Okay.
And then there was four. And then semis, and then, this is like playoff playoffs.
No, but I'm like, if they get through Friday, is that state semifinal thing?
Yeah.
Top four? Yeah, okay.
Okay. This is our final recognition for the evening, and it's state champion weightlifters. And so our first state champion is a junior at Manatee.
Let's just look and go.
Okay. I didn't realize they were.
Good call.
There's a lot of traffic still.
And we got a, we got a good crowd waiting to get in.
Coach Lansky, can you go do some crowd control out there, please? We need some help on the door.
And has another group to come in, you say?
No, I think there's just people coming in, like, wait and sit, and no one.
Oh, wait.
That was a great turnout of family and friends and all those kids, that was awesome.
All right, Mr. Barber, you can go ahead.
Okay, great. Our first state champion is a junior at Manatee High School. Her name is Sharika King, and she won the top weight class at the Class Three A State Championship. She lifted, it was the Olympic-style weightlifting event. She lifted three hundred and eighty pounds combined in snatch and the clean and jerk. I think we have some photos of her in action.
Look at that.
Here, so it's an amazing feat. We have here with us as a principal at Manatee, Shannon Fleming. We also have Matt Bowling, the athletic director, and also the weightlifting coach, Rich Lansky, and he's gonna tell us a little bit about Sharika.
Good evening, board. My name is Rich Lansky. I am the weightlifting coach at Manatee High School and serve as the medical academy lead there. I have the good fortune to be Sharika King's teacher and coach at Manatee. Whether it's in the classroom or on the weightlifting platform, she is a joy to work with. We have a saying at Manatee High School, it's NDO, no days off. And that's the classroom, and that's the weight room. They don't come to class, they don't come to the weight room. It's just as important. Sharika exemplifies that. Every day she comes to school and practice, she's focused on our four pillars. It's the only time I emphasize D's in my classroom, is discipline, determination, dedication, and drive. She does it every day. Her attitude, her effort, and her work ethic paid off big time this year when she took home the Three A Olympic State title in Lakeland Civic Center. Extremely proud of her. She played it perfectly, made the list that she had to make, and left the other people in the dust, so to speak. So I've coached weightlifting for thirty-plus years, and Sharika stands tall with the best student athletes that I've coached. It's my honor and a privilege to coach her, and I am happy to do that every day. Sharika King.
No pressure.
Okay, and her parents are Sharika King and Stanley King, so we're glad. And we also had one other state champion, and I think you know him from last year. He's produced an incredible feat. I was a sports writer for a long time, and I hardly ever heard of this. He's a four-time state champion. He won in the Olympic event at a hundred and sixty-nine pounds. He lifted five hundred and, six, five hundred and seventy-five pounds, two hundred and sixty pounds in the snatch, and three hundred and fifteen pounds in the clean and jerk. And it's, the four-time state champion is Kale Bunce from Palmetto High School. Unfortunately, he couldn't be with us today, but we're hoping to have him come to a future board meeting and be recognized, so. But we're very proud of these state champions, and Sharika, we're glad you could join us today, and best of luck repeating next year, okay? All right? Thank you, guys.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, can I just acknowledge, during all of these great presentations tonight, we had, I think I counted, eight principals and then six directors and executive directors who came, you know, connected to these schools and students and their activities, and it's a very busy time of year for all of our school and district leaders, and I just appreciate all of them for joining the celebration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to item number nine, public comment. So we'll go ahead and get started with our public comment. Just for those who are new on the list and have never had a public comment before, screen above us will give you the three minutes that you have allocated for your public comment. When you come up, podium's hot, mic's hot, you're ready to go. And it is board policy, just FYI, that we do not answer any questions from a public comment, so just be prepared if you're asking questions. It's not that we're ignoring you, it's just our board policy that we don't engage with the public speaker here at the meeting. So let's go ahead and get started. See if he's coming in.
Lots, lots.
I see him at the, I see him at the Evolve machine. So we'll head, we'll, I'm gonna skip Zicafus because he's right there while he's coming in, taking out his keys. We'll skip to number two, Dr. Laura Esslinger. Dr. Laura Esslinger, going once, going twice.
Are they in the lobby?
Hold on, we're outside trying to get in.
Oh, is she out there too?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you can go ahead and come on up. You were actually first, but I saw you, I saw you coming in. So come on down. The Price is Right.
Give me ten seconds.
Yeah, you're good. You're good.
Take a beat.
Thank you.
No problem.
You good?
If you're good.
I am good.
All right, perfect.
Good morning, good evening, board members. I want to begin tonight by naming the reality in front of us. The board workshop to discuss whether the over twelve thousand charter students will receive their fair share of the half penny sales tax has now been delayed twice. But let's be honest, this delay didn't begin in twenty twenty-five. Charter families have been waiting since two thousand sixteen. As a former history teacher, I know history matters, not just big dates like July fourth or nine eleven, but the quieter ones too, the ones that shape our trust and define our community. For over, for the over seventy-eight hundred Manatee County charter families, that date is October twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen. According to the school district video and the board minutes, on that night, two weeks before, voters renewed the sales tax. According to the school district video and the board minutes, on that night, two weeks before voters renewed the sales tax, the school board recognized its passing depended upon the trust and support of charter's families. After all, charter students had grown to roughly fifteen percent of the public enrollment. Also on that night, Mr. Bustle, principal of Palmetto Charter, shared that he and his charter board voted to support the half penny sales tax, but clarified that they were prepared to stand against it if something was not done to share it in a more equitable way. Dr. Bill Jones, principal of Manatee School for the Arts, stood where I stand and urged revision of the proposal, along with several other community members. In response to this, the board, board member Bob Goss proposed an amended motion to ensure a fair share for charter schools. The amended motion passed unanimously with a clear directive that the block grant would be used, and I quote, "For year one, with the superintendent and district staff working with charter schools to establish an equitable distribution going forward." End quote. Board member Dave Minor said it best that night. Charter families will feel good knowing the school board is on a record that they are going to receive money from the sales tax. Two weeks later, on November eighth, the half penny sales tax passed. But after that, district leadership never followed through. The amended motion about equitable distribution was never added to the executive action, a serious omission that undermines the board directive. No collaboration, no revised plan, no implementation. Then, in August twenty twenty-three, the then-board voted to officially terminate all charter school access to sales tax funds. It's important to understand that this was a different board, years removed from the original vote, and were relying on the flawed executive action that disregarded what the twenty sixteen board clearly directed. Their decision was guided by a document that had never been properly updated and which did not respond accord- in a district that did not respond accordingly. As a result, families paid the price. At the end of the day, this isn't about politics or preference, it's about principle. The history is clear. As Dave Minor said that night, charter schools are part of our operation, part of our great educational cloth of our community. We are one county, we are one district, and we are one community of learners. I urge you to include charter students in the twenty-four, twenty-five distribution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Dr. Dr. Laura Eslinger, followed by Lisa Konesny. Is that close?
We'll find out.
Hi.
Hi.
Hey, Board, thank you for your time. Superintendent, thank you for your time. My name is Dr. Laura Eslinger. I'm a veterinarian. I've been a veterinarian in Manatee County for seventeen years. What's more important is I received my education from Manatee County. In nineteen ninety-one, I went to Bashaw Elementary, I went to Brayden River Middle, I went to Southeast High School, I went to USF, and I finally received my clinical degree in veterinary medicine at UF. And then after that, I married my high school sweetheart, who went to Manatee High School, and nineteen eighty-seven, manatee transplant. Went through all the schools and all the goodness of Braydenton, and we said, where are we going? Actually, there was no question. We were coming home, home. This place, this beautiful county that has raised us and that has been the most amazing, hardworking, caring, compassionate, honest, promise-keeping people. And that's the most important thing. I understand a promise was made to us, voters, in twenty sixteen. I understand it was made by a different board, but it was still made to us, us, the voters of Manatee County. On October twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen, two weeks before the half penny sales surtax vote, the Manatee County School Board unanimously amended a motion to ensure charter schools would be included in a funding plan. Now, I know things have changed, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, there have been bills and there have been things that have changed. But what should not change is that all the money should follow the children, the public school, charter school children. That is what needs to be done. And May twenty-third at ten o'clock, a public workshop, school board workshop, is to be had. I would love to make it. I have rescheduled a few patients of mine, um, and, um, lovingly, thankfully, um, they are absolutely fine with that. I would love if it happened, cause I would love to understand where the money is going. Where the money that we voted for, this half-cent penny, where is it going? Where did it go? How did it get broken down? And charter schools are public schools, and they deserve a fair share. And the promise that was made in twenty sixteen needs to be upheld. I know in twenty twenty-three, August eleventh, that meeting, there was a, um, a lot to talk about, an audit. And then at the end, there was talking about how we're gonna break this down, or how we can afford to pay the charter schools, whether we're gonna do a tax block again, if it was legal, or pay them six million or zero. And it was chosen zero. And there's gotta be an in-between between six million and zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up. I appreciate, I appreciate the support, but no, just hold the applause, please, cause it's gonna go, can go both ways. All right, next up, Lisa Konesny. I think I got it right that time. No?
We're not gonna find out.
Lisa Konesny? No? Okay. You signed up twice. Steven, you, Steve, you signed up twice, right? On accident? No problem. Um, then we got Ann Wilson, followed by Ann Mitchell.
Good evening, Manatee Board of Education Superintendent Weisong and community guests. I'd like to thank the board for your support of charter schools in Manatee County. My family moved here thirteen years ago from California with a freshman and a sophomore in high school. Both girls attended Lakewood Ranch High School and had a positive experience. But in spite of taking honors and advanced placement classes, they were still about a year to a year and a half ahead academically of their peers. We will always be infinitely grateful for school choice and the opportunity our girls had to attend the State College of Florida Collegiate School. It supported our daughters' academic ambitions and met their needs for more accelerated study. They graduated high school with their diplomas and a complete associate's degree, sixty-six college credits. The Manatee Charter School made a defining difference in both of our daughters' educations and futures. Today, I work at Lakewood Ranch Preparatory Academy, a charter school in Manatee County with a college preparatory focus. It offers accelerated coursework and came, and the Cambridge program out of Oxford University. We are the only high school in the state of Florida and only one of four high schools in the country that have a partnership with LeCom. Our high school seniors can obtain early provisional acceptance to LeCom Medical School if they meet certain criteria and follow the program requirements. This is an amazing opportunity for Manatee County high school seniors who are seeking a career in medicine. They can go to college knowing they're already accepted to medical school and after they complete, uh, after they complete the program qualifications. Similar to the State College of Florida Collegiate School, these options are available to all Manatee County students. But that doesn't mean that they're the optimal fit for every student. This is why we continue to need school choice. We are all united by one mission, student success. But our students are not one-size-fits-all, and our educational options must reflect that. People are moving to Manatee County from all over the country and the world. They are coming here with different educational backgrounds and needs, just like I did. The necessity for school choice is greater now than ever, as is the funding to support these schools. May second, the board has a workshop regarding the half penny sales tax issue. I urge the board to honor the promise made nine years ago to provide equitable distribution of these funds to all schools, including Manatee Charter Schools that serve twelve thousand students and their families. The greatest way that we fail our children is to lack the courage to change and do things differently. We ask our students to do this every day, but we must lead by example. I have every confidence that you have the courage to change the way how the half penny tax is distributed. Respectfully, I ask the board to honor HB one-two-five-nine, which states that charter schools should be paid a portion of the tax based on their FTE enrollment. I thank you in advance for leading with integrity to be a power of example for our students and community.
Thank you. All right, next up, Ann Mitchell, followed by David Nish.
We're speaking on the same subject, are we allowed to stand together? So, I am speaking for three minutes and then he's speaking for three minutes.
I don't mind you guys standing with each other, yeah, but you're, you're gonna have three and he's gonna have three, yeah, okay. Yeah.
My name is Ann Mitchell, and I am here as a parent, an advocate for student safety, and a concerned member of this district. I am speaking on behalf of my eleven-year-old daughter in the picture, Grace Mitchell. I am deeply troubled by the decision to allow my daughter's fifth-grade teacher at BD Gullett Elementary School to resign, rather than to pursue termination. This teacher engaged in serious and egregious misconduct involving my daughter and other students at BD Gullett Elementary School. His actions included inappropriate unwanted physical contact, repeated violations of student boundaries, including a grooming letter, harassing Post-Its, forged office documents, misuse of school technology and cell phones, including airdropping photos from students' cell phones without their consent onto his, and video recording my daughter running at recess with no educational purpose. Other acts of harassment and documented emotional, psychological manipulation of vulnerable children. These were not isolated incidents, they were sustained violations of the most basic teacher standards of trust and safety. In my hands, I have a copy of the two-page handwritten textbook grooming letter that was written by this teacher and given to my eleven-year-old daughter while she was simply trying to attend PE. I am speaking to all of you, not just as board members, but as a mother, a parent. How has this district and board protected and vindicated my daughter Grace or any of the children affected by this teacher? I ask you, where is the district and the board's transparency? Where is the accountability? With the permission of the district, a guardian at BD Gullett Elementary School raved surveillance video and flagged a video which showed that this male fifth-grade teacher led my eleven-year-old daughter into his classroom and spent forty-five minutes alone with her while the rest of the students went to the library for their specials on Valentine's Day. The guardian reported the incident to the district on Friday, April eleventh. To date, we have not been notified of this horrific incident by anyone in the district or on this board. Superintendent Weisong and Mr. Choat, do you know what my daughter went through behind that door? She is my daughter, and I still do not know the answer to that question. My daughter has been deeply emotionally affected by this situation. She has nightmares and wake up, and wakes up having cried in her sleep. This teacher stole a piece of her innocence, and the district and the board are allowing a resignation. That was not your choice to make alone, it should have been ours as well. Termination was and remains the necessary and rightful response. Our children deserve a school district and board that places the safety above, uh, the safety of children above administrative convenience. I urge this district and board to reflect deeply on how this was handled. Not just for my daughter, Grace Mitchell, but for every student in the district who deserves to be safe, protected, and heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Board. My name is David Kanesh. I'm a former school principal, um, also a varsity basketball coach, but most importantly tonight, I'm a grandfather, okay? And, uh, you guys, some of you guys are grandfathers, you know what that's all about. I love my kids, I love my grandkids. And when this went on, my heart broke, and, uh, I, I can't believe it. I know I was a superinten- I was a, a principal of a school, and I know that the safety of our kids are the most important thing. I know you have good teachers in this district. I'm not, you know, we, we've seen them, we know they're good people. But in this case, somebody dropped the ball, somebody failed my granddaughter, and it could have been more serious than what it was. I guess what my daughter and I are here for is that this doesn't happen to any other kids, okay? Because it can, and you know where we're living, okay? You know what kind of time we're living in. Something has got to be done. We're, we care more about the kids. I've cared about kids, I've been with kids my whole life. So, and I know you guys care about them, so I'm asking that you do more, okay? That you do more. This individual who was with my granddaughter should not have been allowed to be there. Somebody should have been watching, and maybe somewhere along the line, these teachers maybe need a little bit more training, okay? We do training for everything else. Why can't we train to make sure that we look at our staff? Cause sometimes those people come in on the inside, okay? They're mean, they, everybody looks at them, they say, well, they're great, and they're doing a good job. But maybe, guys, maybe that's not the case, okay? And we need to do that. Uh, I'm, uh, I'm, I guess I'm emotional right now, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Uh, I stand, first and foremost, no one from the district board reached out to my daughter or family to inform them of the teacher's resignation. Nobody told them, okay, Mr. Nelson, nobody informed them. We have also been told that one reason for the board to accept the teacher's resignation was to avoid a formal DOH hearing where students might have been asked to testify. The district and superintendent never reached out to the families involved, including ours, asked that we supported that process. I can say without a doubt, if given the option, we would have come forward and participated fully, support this termination of this teacher. Protecting the children, including my daughter, from further harm, my, my granddaughter from further harm is a priority. But the decision to accept this resignation was made without even asking anyone, very families whose children were affected. You dropped the ball, okay? You can do a better job. I know that. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you.
Chair. Uh, next is...
Is there any other people talking on this topic, do you know?
I don't, I don't have it. I, I don't know.
I am.
Yeah, are you, are you, um, Ms. Nebro? So, um, Ash Naafi Nebro?
Yes.
Come on up. And then Paula Larson.
Good evening, uh, um, members of the school board. I'm grateful to be here, um, to speak directly, and not many people have the chance to speak to their elected leaders around the world. Everybody should know that. And, uh, I'm grateful because, uh, we should not take this for granted, to see the leaders. Some places, they don't even know who the leaders are. And so what I'm saying here today is I'm here because I share the common cause, uh, because I'm an educator. As an educator, I believe children should get a fair chance, equal chance, every time. Making sure every child, no matter what school they go to, they should have equal access to resources. I have been an engineer, I've been a soldier, but education is in my blood. I believe in education. Education is a great equalizer, now, the foundation of any community, better community, better life, better future for every child. Now, but that could be compromised when resources are withheld. This is going to be true for any community. Now, some resources are given to other schools for, for the whatever reason. That means while others are barely making it. What I'm saying here is, we all remember one phrase from a great American, uh, who said, tear down this wall. That wall is that divides communities. The schools are getting some resources, some others are not getting the resource they deserve. So, the point I'm trying to make is there's an artificial wall that's dividing schools, charter and district, and that should come down. And for that reason, many students are not getting the resources they deserve, even though they belong into that same community. Now, we simply cannot afford these walls standing. Our children are counting on us to see beyond labels, and they should, they should get all the resources they deserve, like everybody else. Now, this board has the power to make that real difference. Uh, we, when you are elected, you are elected for all students, regardless of what school they, they go to. You believe in the power of education. You care about all the students. The belief is the beginning. Now, even you can tear this wall down. So, what my point again here is to make that hole end in this, in this wall, in this wall, to make sure the kids are going to be seen like everybody else. So, I urge you to, to, to advocate for a fair distribution of resources to ensure that all students, no matter what school they go to, have a support they need to succeed. Manatee County's vision is one unity, inclusion, and progress. A vision that does not see barriers between schools, and that barrier should be broken down. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Lastly, Paula Larson.
Hello, my name's Paula Larson. I am a mother of an eleven-year-old fifth grader at Gullett, my daughter, and a third grader at Gullett. In today's society, the way that parents feel when they drop their kids off at school has changed. There is always an underlying fear of a school shooting, of a nightmare like the ones that have happened at other schools. We hear our children tell us about lockdown drills, what they would do if something like that happened. We make it some sense of security, knowing that there are armed guardians, both inside and outside of the school, to protect our children should something happen, should someone try to enter the school and cause harm. One thing that we as parents don't do is play... One thing that we as parents don't do is place any doubt on the intentions or behavior of our children's teachers already inside the school. We send our children to school each day because a school, by definition, is an institution for educating children. We trust our school administrators have done and continue to do due diligence on these teachers with whom we entrust our children each day. We bring our children to school with excitement in early August, as they get to meet their new teacher, provide them comfort that this person is going to take care of them and have a great year, they're going to ensure they're safe, because we can't be there. A teacher, by definition, is a person who provides instruction and guidance to students in a formal setting, such as a school or university. An analogous formal setting for most parents is their workplace. As an employee, you are a representation of that workplace. Your behavior as an employee is often governed by a code of conduct or ethics. It's essentially an aid or a guide to ensure you are exercising reasonable judgment when conducting your work. When you violate that policy, you are terminated. We have seen instances when someone is terminated from their job from something they did when they weren't even at work. Imagine something happening at work and not being terminated for it? That person is still a representation of that company, and if you don't want to be associated with that type of behavior, you separate yourself from it. You end it, you terminate it. If you don't already have one, it might be time to implement an anonymous see-something-say-something policy. I've worked in a professional setting for over twenty years, with some of that time in human resources, and I can say with confidence that if I was in a school setting where there were, was a male teacher sitting with only female students on a regular basis, it would raise a red flag if I saw a female student sitting with only male students on a regular basis. It would raise a red flag, it would make me question that behavior. That should have been happening, it should continue to happen. I'm going to run out of time, but we don't want to wait for these things to happen to do something about it. We should be striving to prevent these things from ever possibly happening.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our public comment for this evening. We're going to move to consent items, did you have something, Ms. Murray?
Yeah, I need...
I don't see anyone requesting to speak, so, I mean, and normally we don't after public comment, but, go ahead.
I need a minute, that's all. I just need a few, a couple of minutes, if you don't mind.
A recess?
Yeah.
I was, I was, Chad, I was going to ask the same thing, if we could take a five-minute break?
Please, yeah, I need that.
At six twenty-six, we'll come back at six thirty-one for a recess.
Thank you.
All right, welcome back from recess. Let me get my granite kids up. No speak where you want to speak? Or just we need this recess?
No, Chairman, so we don't comment by Robert's rules. We don't comment on the consent agenda.
Yeah. We could certainly comment at the end of the meeting.
Well.
Let me, I'll do.
I haven't finished them.
No, I this, I heard some new information during Mrs. Mitchell's comments, which gave me some pause. I asked for the recess and I appreciate it so I could speak to the superintendent. In the interest of the legal matters outside the district, which are still ongoing, I'm going to withhold a comment about this. I gotta be delicate here, the specifics, but I do want to say I'm deeply sorry for what happened to your daughter and your family. There's clearly been some breakdowns along the way here and which will lead to some policy reform and some training reform. I think the board can can support that. And I think we will unanimously when we get there over the summer. But because of this position, I really, Mrs. Mitchell, if you have a chance tomorrow, I would love to speak to you one-on-one or, you know, whoever you'd like, just outside of a board meeting setting, if that would be okay with you. And if you don't, I understand that too. But I can, I can reach out to you tomorrow if you don't mind. Thanks so much. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay. I'm probably not going to be as gentle as that. This amendment that was made to our agenda on April 25th, added to the agenda April 25th, 2025. My intention is to pull that item from the consent of the HR board work. And I would, once we pull that and we have that as a topic, I have a paragraph I want to read from our policy. But I'll wait till you get to that. So that's my, I want to pull that part off of the board work.
Okay. The entire?
Nope, just the amendment, just number one, had been amended on April 20.
Yeah, April 25th, I guess my.
That's the only amendment. I can pull the whole HR if you want me to.
No, I don't know. I'm okay with you doing it. I'm asking legal, which way?
I consulted with legal. I could pull just the amended portion of the HR board work.
Okay.
It seems since the HR board work had an amendment, it would be fine just to pull whatever the topic of that specific amendment was and continue on with the remainder of the consent agenda.
Okay.
So you would have, the item that was the topic of that amendment would be put at the end of your consent agenda in the normal course of things and will be considered individually.
Right, well, so we'll take the amendment part down to new business, item number three, under new business.
It says will be considered at the end of the session, the end of the session being consent items or new business?
It is totally pulled from the consent. It would go to new business?
Yes.
No superintendent recommendation? Am I correct in that?
No, there would have to be a superintendent recommendation.
Okay.
It would be under number 12.
It would be under, it would be.
Under number 12.
Number 12.
Number 12.
Number 12, one.
Discussion I, discussion I was pulled from consent.
So create a 12-1.
Okay. Okay, that would be my, that would be my request is to pull that particular amendment from the board HR, the HR board work and place it under item number 12, new business, discussion pulled from consent. If you don't mind, please.
So I don't mind it. I, I think it's going against what we normally do. I would have said just you should have pulled it at the approval of the agenda, but I'll pull it for sure and put it 12-1.
Well, there was, there's information that I did not have prior to when we voted on approval of the consent or approval of the agenda. We have not gotten to item number 10. I, we have not gotten to item number 10, consent agenda.
Yeah, I got, no, I get what you're saying.
Right. Okay.
All right, I mean, that doesn't need a vote. I mean, it's the board members' right to pull something off consent. So doesn't need a vote. So we'll just add that to 12-1, under new business, pulled from consent with a superintendent recommendation. All right. So that moves us to item number 10, the consent items now without the amendment. Superintendent Weisong?
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the consent agenda as modified for the April 29th, 2025 school board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
So you have a motion and a second for the approval of the consent items as amended. So let's go ahead and vote on those now.
I'm waiting.
There we go.
There it goes, the second.
There it goes. Let's move it slow. Oh, is it me?
You gotta push that button. It doesn't work unless you push the button.
Yes. I've hit it three times. There it goes.
It's running slow.
Consent items pass five to zero. All right, so give me a little gabbling here as we move in and out. So I'm going to close this public meeting. I'm officially going to open up the public hearing. And this public hearing is for consideration to adopt and amend school board policies that we have previously advertised and also workshopped. This is open to anyone about those specific policies. Anyone can come up and public comment on those. Is there anyone that would like to come and public comment on those policies that are listed in the board work? Okay. Seeing no public comment, I want to go ahead and close the public hearing and reopen the public meeting. Did we need, did we need another five minutes for signatures? Yep. Okay, so I'm going to give us some, I'm sorry, I'm going to give us another five-minute recess so we can take care of some administrative stuff and then we'll be right back on item number 12. All right. Sorry about the recess. I had to sign and notarize some things from the consent agenda. Moving on to item number 12, new business, pulled from consent without being told a superintendent recommendation. So I'll pass it to the superintendent for his recommendation.
Chair, Chairboard members, I recommend acceptance of the resignation while under investigation of the employee.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent. Do we have a motion?
So move for the purposes of discussion.
If we don't motion it, ain't anything to talk about.
Then I'll second.
Okay.
For the purposes of discussion.
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second. Normally, under new business with superintendent recommendation, we allow you to alliterate what that item is. If you want to, you can, I mean, however you feel necessary. And then I don't see any board members right this minute lit up to speak, but then I'm sure we'll have questions. So go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. And I'll, I'll, I'll talk and Mr. Penley will cut me off if we, we get into an area that's impermissible. I'm not going to comment on the specific matter because there are open investigations. And it is a guiding principle here that the school district does nothing to interfere with external agency investigations, nothing that might compromise the integrity of an external investigation. What I will say is that generally, board members, as you're aware, anytime there's an allegation received that's credible that affects the health, safety, welfare of a student, the employee is immediately separated from students either through reassignment or administrative leave pending the outcome of the investigation. The investigations are conducted by the Office of Professional Standards, which is led by Mr. Nelson, whom you all know well. When there are no external investigations happening, the work happens quickly. But again, we do nothing that interferes with an external investigation. And so when we have that happen, the Office of Professional Standards does wait until cleared to proceed with that investigation. In the course of the investigation and interviewing an employee, when an employee offers their resignation, our, our practice is to accept the resignation, label it while under investigation and bring it to the board for approval. And we try to do that at the next scheduled meeting because we, we want to move forward with that resignation and not, not have it pulled back. And so in this case, Mr. Nelson was cleared to do what he needed to do and the resignation came last week in time to put it on the standard agenda amendment that we post the Friday prior to the board meeting at 5:00 PM. So that's why the agenda was amended. It was just the timing of the resignation coming in. To be clear, if the board approves the action, many of the same elements of termination are present. So when we have an employee who resigns while under investigation, the file is flagged as a do not rehire in the district. That flag also serves to alert if a reference request is received from another employer. So that it's clear that, that there was a, a matter pending when a resignation came in. Pursuant to statute, we also report to the Office of Professional Practices at the Florida Department of Education. And then that report is updated as things proceed. And so in any matter where you have a resignation while under investigation, the Office of Professional Standards completes its work and then forwards it to Tallahassee, to the State Department of Education, Office of Professional Practices, which also flags the certification file. And then that office also has the opportunity to launch their own investigation, which can result in action against an educator's certificate up to and including permanent revocation. But that is their process to undertake. And so board members, this has unfolded as, as other matters have and, and led to the, the placement of the resignation while under investigation. Mr. Penley, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
I concur and the superintendent has described for you exactly the way the statute 1012, 796 requires us to handle these matters. The statute does contemplate a resignation in lieu of termination and that is reported the same as a termination for purposes of DOE flagging the employee's certificate.
Can you say that one more time?
So this, the procedure that the superintendent has outlined is exactly in compliance with chapter 1012, 796 Florida statutes that contemplates an employee resigning in lieu of termination. Those two things, a resignation while an investigation is ongoing is treated the same as a termination for purposes of flagging that employee's certificate. So there's, you end up with the same result, either road you take to get there. It's just a much longer one if you go the termination route because we have to follow due process procedures for that. If an employee resigns, we're able to do it more efficiently and get that report to the Department of Education earlier rather than later. That's the difference.
Thank you. I still don't see any.
I'm left.
Speaking, so we'll just go left to right. Ms. Felton, you go first.
Okay. As, as the rest of the board knows, I am long married to a law enforcement officer. I have worked previously to marrying my husband. I worked with law enforcement as a, as a journalist. And I probably have a bit more insight than your average person as to, I know statute, I, law enforcement statute, I know the codes. I know lots of procedures more than your average person does. And I can, I can, I can assure the families that, that as I happen to know that there is still an active investigation going on, that I myself would not want to do anything to disrupt that. So I don't want to discuss any particulars because I don't want to disrupt their investigation. I want them to take care of this to the fullest extent of the law. I'm also a parent and a teacher. And I was not as brave as your daughter when I was a child from my own experience. And I commend her bravery to speak up because she's probably saved a lot of other children. So I do understand where you're coming from, but I don't want to wait until the investigation is complete to try and go through resignation or from, pardon me, to go through firing because as he's going to be non-renewed, it is entirely possible with this investigation ongoing that he'll no longer be working for us by the time it's done. that he'll no longer be working for us by the time it's done. And then we can't fire him. But I appreciate you coming here and speaking to us. You okay?
I'm okay. I'm going to read from our policy. Policy number 3213, paragraph H. If anyone wants to look that up, whether, because I'm quite honestly holding back the emotional side because, I don't know what you're talking about. My briefing about, this was brought up to me during my briefing, which was on the 21st. And I was made aware of an incident involving an inappropriate, I didn't, the materials, a note, whatever the case, it was inappropriate. So for policy 3213, paragraph H, "An instructional staff member shall not inappropriately associate with a student at any time in a matter which may give the appearance of improperly, including but not limited to, the creation or participation in any situation or activity which could be considered abusive, sexually suggestive, or involve legal substances such as drugs, alcohol, or tobacco. Any sexual or other inappropriate conduct with a student by a staff member will be subject, will subject the offender to potential criminal liability and discipline up to and including termination of employment." My first few months on this board, and you can go back and look at the reels, I swore to protect the innocence of our children, and that's what I intend to do. So I hope I can get the support from this board to at least table this resignation until the investigation is done, and then we can bring it back once we have the full, I learned more about this case from public comment than I did from the superintendent. And I'm not afraid to say that because I'm appalled that I did not know some of those details. Forty-five minutes in a room alone with a student, that alone should have been terminated. Why we didn't get a, I'm sorry, I'm going on, but why didn't we get a, put him on recommended leave without pay? Why was he reassigned? I don't understand that at all. People can justify and do all of these other things, due process and all of that. I get it. I've lived it. I'll say that I've lived it so I know what due process is. And it takes too long sometimes. It takes way too long. So I do not want to accept this gentleman's resignation. I want to table it until the investigation is done so we don't taint the process. And I'm looking at mom and family. We have to go through the process. Legally, we have to go through the process. But I pulled this so I could table this particular item until that process is done, and we are given a full report both legally and by statute and by legal. So I'm asking for a motion to table this item until this investigation is done. And I'm hoping I have board members sitting up here with me that will go with me on that.
Can I dialogue with you one second on that?
Absolutely.
The motion? So I just want to be really careful here. First off, I'll reiterate what Mr. Kennedy said. This is horrific, and I think you know how I feel. There's been conversations. But I want to be respectful of the investigation and different things like that. My, so my dialogue with you, Ms. Spray, is, I guess, the possible concern about tabling it is it's still hanging on. He's, there's still someone here that shouldn't be here. So I don't necessarily agree with tabling it because if we wait, then it's, he's still here. What if the investigation takes two months, three months, whatever? It's still part of the district, right? Like, I want him gone yesterday. So I just, that's my only concern about tabling it. And maybe it doesn't, as legal, I don't know what that looks like, but that's, if we table, he's just hanging on. I don't know if that makes sense. Like, there's not a definitive until an investigation. And if the investigation comes back, who knows what that outcome is? I think we can all hope what it is, but I don't know what it is. And it's been a month, two months, you know, I don't know, until the investigation is done. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
I get what you're saying, but I just read the policy leading up to termination. I don't know why a recommendation from the superintendent wasn't made to actually put him on unpaid leave and through the investigation. I don't know what options, other options there were, but I'm reading the policy, and it says leading up to termination of employment. So I will look to legal if I could. Maybe I need to change my mindset that it should be a termination instead of tabling it until the investigation's done.
The policy says, with reference to the conduct by any staff member, will subject the offender, meaning the staff member, to potential criminal liability and discipline up to and including termination of employment. So that is one of several options. What I heard, I think the superintendent say, is that if, we all know investigations take time. We all understand that. And we also don't want to interfere with an external investigation, which I understand is underway. So if it is tabled, in my opinion, it could result in what I would consider an unintended consequence because this particular individual has a contract which will run out at the end of the school year. I don't know when your contracts expire, but I heard someone say it's, he's not going to be renewed. So if you table it, the investigation is not completed, and we don't have, we might run out of time on the ability to terminate. That's not a good thing. That is not a good thing, regardless of how much you might want to go through that process because it does feel better. It feels better to me, too. But I think the recommendation from the superintendent appears to be the correct one because the termination by law, I mean, the resignation under investigation is on basically an equal footing with a termination for cause. Things get flagged all the way up the line. We have an active external investigation, which will have whatever outcome it may have. But we, if we act now as opposed to possibly running out of time when the contract for this individual expires, because then we will have nothing. We have no opportunity to do anything because you can't terminate someone who's not your employee. So I do think while, you know, at first blush, termination sounds great. In this situation, you're so close to the end of the school year, so close to the end of the contract, I think you probably, it is in everyone's best interest to go forward with the resignation under investigation standpoint because that will flag files, which is what Mr. Penley said, what your superintendent said. It will flag files. The investigation will be completed. It will eventually be sent to the state. They can do their own investigation if they want. More files can get flagged. Certifications can be removed. And it has the benefit of not interfering with any external ongoing investigation.
I understand all that. I mean, you can do the vote. I'm not going to vote for, to accept his resignation. I would vote for termination because I think this is an egregious case that should have been the first thing. That should have been the first consideration. Don't be so afraid of doing the right thing. That's just the way I feel. Don't be so afraid of doing the right thing. My goodness, isn't that what we're here for? And a commenter said, should there be a place for parents, students, whatever, it's called safety over secrets. Go on Fortify. It's out there already. Feel free to use it. It's my tagline. You know, it's all over our schools. I'm just stuck on, don't be afraid to do the right thing. And the right thing, to me, feels like termination. And I, it would be hard for me to change my mind on that. So it's up to the rest of the board. I've made my case. I've read the policy. I just think that there was stuff that I wasn't informed about that was brought to my attention during this meeting that shocked me, to the core, that shocked me. That's all I have to say, so you can go to another board member if you like.
So first, ma'am, are you still here? The mother? Yeah. It's obviously a very serious situation. Ms. Spray, I hear what you're saying. So the goal is here, as I see it, is what is the quickest way to ensure that the person involved is no longer part of the Manatee County School System? To me, that's the goal, whatever path we take. So I like to use analogies, so I came up with one, and, you know, let's say that, I know this is a hot topic, but I think it's a good analogy. Let's say there was someone in the country illegally. There were two ways we could, they could possibly leave. One would be to arrest them, go through a long legal process, and remove them. But the second way is if they would self-deport, then they would be gone, and it would accomplish the same process. So when I look at the difference between the termination process, which is a long legal process, as Mr. Penley described, and to me, resignation is kind of like self-deporting. It's like I'm removing myself from the situation. The way the analogy breaks down is if you self-deport, you know, from the United States, you can apply to come back. But in this situation, as Mr. Penley said, everything will be flagged. He will never be able to teach again in the state of Florida, hopefully anywhere else. And so the quickest and best way to accomplish our goals is that he resign, that all the flags get put on his teacher's certificate, and that he is no longer part of the Manatee County School System. Because I, that's the goal of what we're trying to accomplish here. And I am concerned, as is our legal counsel, that the longer we draw this out, and as Mr. Choak said, that the situation, this person is still part of our school system, and the whole bureaucratic process is still running forward, and it tends to move slowly. So if he resigns, it's kind of, he's gone, and everything is flagged as we want it to be. And I would like to remind everybody that we don't do criminal investigations, right? What happens to this person, whether or not there's anything that happens to him, is not, is not up to us as a school system. That's the sheriff and the state attorney that decide what's going to happen to him legally. What we want is for this person to no longer be associated with the Manatee County School System in the quickest way possible and to have his file flagged so he can never teach again. And at least as I understand it, as it's been explained to me, the quickest and best way to do that is to accept his resignation right now.
If I may dialogue back?
Sure.
It's not the question of him leaving the district. Should have already been done, in my opinion. That's my problem, is he should have been terminated far before April 29th. That's my personal opinion on this, based on public comment and emails that I've gotten. So that's where I'm from. That's where I'm coming from. We have terminated people before, pending legal investigations, and the legal system went ahead and did their jobs. They decide their case. We just had one, no contest. That person wasn't allowed to stay on. They were gone very quickly. Matter of fact, three individuals were gone very quickly. And why this individual was allowed to linger, I have no idea. And I just can't say it again. Don't be afraid to do the right thing. Guys, vote your conscience. You do what you need, but that's where I'm standing.
What happens, Mr. Penley? When somebody, when we want to terminate somebody, they actually have, at that point, do they not have a right to request a DOA hearing?
They do.
And they can just delay the process?
Just.
If they, if we say terminate, you know, fine, I want a DOA hearing. And then they're still with the school system, they're still part of the school system. The DOA hearing could take a couple of months to happen. Would you, am I correct in what I'm saying or not?
You are correct.
But, so if they resign, what happens when I say I resign from the school system as employee? At that moment, am I no longer a member of the Manatee County School System, or it takes a day or so? But I mean, is it almost immediate, or is it?
It's as immediate as we can make it in HR to take that person off the payroll and close out their accounts and email and so forth and things so that they're not a part of the system any longer.
But if we say terminate and they contest, then they're part of the school system until such time as the DOA hearing goes through, it comes back to us, maybe a couple of months down the road for a board decision? Is that correct or is that not?
If they request a hearing, yes.
And you run the risk of them requesting a hearing. If you terminate them, they can, they can demand that their legal due process rights for a DOA hearing be exercised. Is that correct?
That's correct. The normal process is, in a situation like this, we would close out the report. The employee is, has an opportunity to receive that report, and for 10 days after that, there's a confidentiality period. The board only meets every two weeks, on average, thereabouts, and a recommendation is made from the superintendent to terminate that and to place them on administrative leave without pay. The board votes on that, the procedure goes forward. If we were to not accept a resignation in this case, we would have to follow that procedure, bringing the termination recommendation, administrative leave without pay, period. The report has to be concluded. You get that report, the 10 days expires, we make the report, then the termination comes. All we're saying is, at this point, you can achieve the same result tonight by accepting your resignation versus going through a termination proceeding.
And the superintendent cannot terminate an employee, right?
The superintendent cannot terminate.
It has to be done at a board meeting with the vote of the board.
Correct.
But the member can resign and it can be effective immediately.
Correct.
That's my goal, Ms. Spray, is it?
I understand. I totally understand the process.
Okay.
I've been here enough to know now what the process is. Is this individual still on our payroll?
Not since he has tendered his resignation so that we...
Which was?
Friday.
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 Friday. So he tendered his resignation on Friday. So he was not put on administrative leave without pay when this incident was brought to our attention?
The superintendent can't put anyone on administrative leave without pay.
Without pay until it comes to the board.
Correct. Normally, the procedure is to do an assign, reassignment with pay, and they're placed somewhere outside of their school, in a place that they're not in contact with direct supervision of students. And then the... And then the recommendation is brought to the board for termination, and followed the due process proceedings.
And we have not had a board meeting since this incident was brought to our attention, correct?
We have not. This, this occurred, I believe, on April 12th that we were advised.
11th, 11th, according to April 12th.
No, I reported to Julie Gerhart, principal, on Monday, March 10th.
Hold on, I, I mean...
Sorry.
No, no, yeah, with all due respect, and I mean this absolutely sincerely, let's not go back into the audience to...
Right, right.
This is us right here.
I'm just saying, I heard April 11th.
I do not mean that to be disrespectful, but...
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine. I ju, I just wrote down April 11th, incident occurred. Okay. So that I even make it work.
Chairman, if I, yeah, if I can just clarify again, the, a, a recommendation for termination would be brought at the conclusion of a school district investigation that includes the full completion of the investigation by the Office of Professional Standards, the completion of that report, the referral of that report to the discipline committee, the meeting of that committee to review the Office of Professional Standards report, then the recommendation from the discipline committee to my office, and then my review, which includes consultation with the general counsel, to ensure there's legally sufficient grounds to proceed. And then at that point, we would bring that recommendation, and, again, there are some other due process points in there that, that Mr. Pennley already explained. But that report isn't going to be completed while there's an active external investigation happening, because to the extent that that report then goes to the employee, and eventually becomes part of the record, again, we don't, we don't want to draw conclusions or make statements that may impact a different investigation. With regards to the comment about prior instances, in the two cases that I believe you're speaking about from last year, law enforcement acted first, the employees in question were arrested, and then tenured resignations, so the law enforcement piece was complete to the point of making that decision, and then we started our piece, and again, there were resignations, tenure. And so that process is different because, again, we have an active external investigation with that principle that we don't do anything that might impede it or impact it. And so that's why this is different from that.
I, I have a question for the superintendent on that. With regard to a typical, because you can't speak to this one, a typical process from when we have a charge, a poss, a possibility of a charge, typically, how long does an inter, discounting when the, when the law enforcement investigation is complete? What is the length of the process typically when it comes to an investigation, prior to trying to terminate?
I hate to give you the answer you don't want, but it really does depend on the complexity, how many witnesses are involved. How long does it take to schedule that interview? Again, in many cases, there are resignations under investigation. This isn't new for this board.
No.
They, they, they've been approved before. It's, it's actually been more rare that you go all the way through a process, you get to that recommendation for termination, and you get to the point where you're preparing a charging document that contains all of the, Mr. Pennley, may not be the right word, the kind of proffer of, of evidence. Because again, we've, we've, we've got serious allegations, but we don't have a completed external or internal investigation.
And so we, we, to make sure I'm following steps, Mr. Pennley, that we, we do our interview with the employee, there's an interview with employee typically, interviews with, just as law enforcement does, interviews with witnesses, reviewing of footage, of our evidence, that, that sort of thing. Am I following that correctly?
Yes, by our Office of Professional Standards.
Standards, okay. So it's basically a second full investigation, similar to a criminal investigation, but this is a professional standards investigation?
Correct.
Okay. So yeah, then, in that case, then it can take an extended period of time, depending, depending.
I'm done.
You're done?
Thank you, sir. I do want to say I felt like when I walked in here tonight, I was prepared for this, and I had, you know, the information that's been shared, has been shared again, so everything has been consistent. What stopped me in my tracks is when I heard Mrs. Mitchell say what her preference is, and that's why, Chairman, I appreciate the recess, so I could confer with the superintendent. And I was prepared to join Mrs. Bray. I'm still, as I sit here now, I'm still not sure what is the best way forward, but I do want to share what has now given me trouble since, since public comment, is Attorney Petrov's comment that we may create a situation where this person walks away unscathed, with no mark on their record, because the clock ran out. And that is obviously the, for more, we're sitting here today, that's the worst outcome of the choices we have. Mrs. Bray, I think you're correct. You, you have the correct policy. We are in that process of that policy now. It's just, do we go with what the superintendent is recommending? Or do we take a chance and reset and respect Mrs. Mitchell's wishes and go to a, go through the termination process? To the attorneys, I do have a question. If, if we were to do that, let's, let's say that this happens, and, and I'm sure the, the person is probably watching this meeting and strategizing right now, so that's unfortunate as well. Well, this, I'll keep my mouth shut. If, if we were to kind of reset, the board directs the superintendent to begin the process of going through a termination. Let's, just hypothetically, the DOA hearing does not happen until after the, after June 30th, the end of our fiscal year. So essentially, the, the termination would be, and everything goes right, and it gets back to us, and the board supports the termination, but we're, like you said, Attorney Petrov, we're terminate, we're now terminating an employee who no longer works for us.
You do?
So, but would all the, and maybe you don't know, even though that employee no longer works for us, and we have now terminated them, would all those flags still go up at DOE? Or does that all become moot? Moot, is that now a moot point because they're not an employee of a school district any longer?
If...
If, if that's clear, and if it's not...
If your contracts expire on June 30th, and I don't know if they do or they don't, but whenever your contract with a teacher expires, then that teacher is no longer employed by the school board. If that expiration date comes before the DOA hearing, because DOA hearings take a long time to schedule, then the issue is moot, and, and the hearing officer has nothing to hear. If the termination of the contract comes in the middle of the DOA hearing, the issue becomes moot, and you no longer have an employee to terminate. And that's what I think is so scary about this, and that's why I'm recommending that you accept the resignation. I'm not agreeing, Ms. Bray, with how it was potentially handled, and maybe the district should and can do better, but in this instance, if you accept the resignation under investigation, the files will be flagged. If you don't, and you run out of time for all the due process, then the individual has an opportunity to walk away, because his contract will be terminated, you cannot, fi, his contract will be ended, you cannot terminate someone who is not your employee. That is the problem that I see, and I, the DOA hearing officers, administrative law judges, are so busy already, they will not, they will gavel this case down as moot. So whenever that contract expires, and I don't know when your teacher contracts expire...
Is it May 30th?
I thought it was June 30th. Superintendent?
June 30th.
I don't think you have enough time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Attorney Petrov.
Do you want to comment?
Mr. Chair, if I might, just add to my colleague's comments, a reading from statute, Florida statutes 1012, 796, 1E, this, this specific situation is contemplated in the statute where it says that the Department of Education is notified of a resignation before an investigation involving allegations of misconduct affecting the health, safety, or welfare of a student was concluded, and placed the person on the disqualification list maintained by the department. That's in part what the statute says. So it does contemplate that a resignation in this situation can come about, and provides that the department would then place them on the disqualification list as well.
Okay, just one. So it, to me, it feels like this is our one chance, and if we wait, we take a risk. And I don't want to take that risk. I want them, I want them gone.
Thank you.
If I could close it out by saying, I take this case personal now, and, and I would also like for you to reach out to me, because I would love to sit with you, and perhaps mentor your daughter, because I know, and I think I could be of some help with that. I don't want to take the chance either of this individual ever getting into another classroom. I think, and I'm going to say it, because that's the way I feel, I think it was handled too much with care, with the optics of the district instead of the safety of a child. And I just feel so sad that that is more important, the optics of the district is more important than the safety of a child, and/or the process. I get the process, and I, I appreciate the legal opinion on this, and I just, I don't want to take the risk of him ever getting there. I would rather see the termination, I, I think termination should have happened soon as you had a interview with a student, with supporting documents, I would say with that. But it didn't happen that way, so, I, Ms. Kennedy, I agree, I don't want to take the risk. I appreciate your comments, but I wanted to make sure that this case was brought forward because I think it's important, it's very important. And, and I, egg on our face, or whatever you want to call it, it's more important to me that we do the right thing and not be afraid to do the right thing. And if future things come up like this, I'm, I'm saying, don't be afraid to do the right thing. And then paper and articles can print that. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks. A couple of things, and then we can, I'll call the vote. I, I, I wish we could have, from the moment we knew anything, said, "See ya." But that's just not how the process works, unfortunately, in this case. And we did, as soon as we knew, pull him out of the classroom. I think the thing that, to me, is disturbing, we need to learn from it, is, prior to us finally figuring out, how do we, how do we fix knowing faster? Right? Like, and, and, and we know we've got Fortify Florida, teachers know they got Fortify Florida. However it is, how do we, how can we notify, because if we don't know, we can't do anything about it. So I think that's number one. How do we, how do we know when wrong things are happening? That's, that is, to me, the biggest question, is how do we know? And, and, and I don't think that we, and obviously, we're, us in here in the room, sitting here, we're not in the cla, we're not there, we're not at the school. So, so that, to me, is something that I would like to look back to, was, was stuff brought up that potentially we could have known quicker? Second, secondly, I think that communication, this could have been, in my personal opinion, could have been just a little more simpler, with the right communication to the stakeholders. And I don't, I don't think that was done here in this case. And so that's, that is, this is what it is. Sometimes you have good communication, sometimes you have bad. But I think that, that's something we have to learn from this, is, is the communication. Not saying that we'd have done anything different than we did, or, you know, what the stakeholders wanted to or not, whatever, that's, that's not, I'm not judging that, I'm saying that the, the communication portion. Because I think that's all, that's really what was missing, is the communication. I do think the fastest way to get this done is to accept the resignation and, and, and be done with them, and throw every red flag, and every neon color, or however we've got to do it, to get them out, and then have never have stepped foot in a classroom again. And I, and I just don't think waiting, or allowing someone to have a chance, because we've sat here several times over the last several months, and have had recommendations to terminations, and then it went to DOA, we had to wait for DOA to come back, et cetera. I don't want to run that chance. I, I just don't. It doesn't feel great to accept a resignation, and I'm, I'm, I'm not like happy about it, but I think that is the quickest, and that is, that's the best way. That doesn't mean we got to be happy about it, but I think that's the best way to, to move on. So I would like to, I would love to give you another que, another comment, but I just, I don't want to go off of what we normally do, because the next topic could be different, and, and so, but please, reach out to us personally with any, you know, other comments that you may have.
I would gladly reach out if someone would actually respond.
I, I, well, I definitely will, so yeah, so...
As, as I have from the beginning, I've been very vocal, and we have been, we have been treated with no response.
Thank you. So, we've got a motion, we've got a second to accept the resignation from the superintendent's recommendation. So are we ready to vote on this?
Yes.
Is it just me again?
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm clicking it over and over and over and over and over and over again. I'm a yes. So it passes four to one with Ms. Bray as the single no. With that, I'm going to pass the gavel to Ms. Bray.
Oh, okay.
My daughter is in a lacrosse playoff game, and so, appreciate, board members.
Good luck to her.
Yeah, yeah.
And I will ma, I'm going to recess for five minutes, so we can reset. Is that all right? We are recessed.
Yeah.
Sure.[1758.97]
Okay, we're going to call this meeting back into order. And according to the agenda, we are on item number 13. New business, non-consent. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair. I recommend approval to adopt and amend school board policies. This is the final approval for policy 0149.1.
You have a motion?
So moved.
And I'll second. That's my job today.
And I don't have access to get everybody's vote?
I would like to make a comment, please, Ms. Bray.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. So I know that I brought this up in the workshop, but I would like to give the board one more opportunity to consider some comments. And that is that, once we open the door to these proclamations, you're going to, it's, there's a possibility of getting all kinds of different proclamations that some of us may agree with and some of us may not agree with. And then we'll, they'll be pulled from the consent agenda or from the agenda. We'll have to debate them. Some will be voted maybe 4-1, 3-2. And I would just encourage us, and I'll, I'll make a motion, and I'll see if I can get a second. Is it true? And I know it would require, I don't know if it would require putting it back out to the public, but just under board proclamations, just to say, the School Board of Manatee County does not do proclamations. And I'll give you two examples so it's not hypothetical. Recently at the county, within the last year or so, I believe, they've had two situations over there where there were proclamations that were brought to them that were controversial and caused, what would, caused the political controversy within the county because the chairman over there would not sign them. And they could very easily be construed to be as something that is aligned with, you know, one was about a Second Amendment issue, one was about a civil rights issue. Certainly those are things that are required instruction or academic standards within our school system. And once you open this door, we're not going to get to choose what comes in the door, what kind of proclamations. And, and, and they'll be debated. If someone doesn't agree with them, there'll be votes on them. I would just like to encourage us to make sure that, once we open this door, that we're, we don't, we don't open ourselves up to things that we want coming through that door that we don't want. And then we have to debate them and vote on them up here. A lot of them will be controversial and political in nature, just like they were over at the county, caused two big brouhahas over there. So I will make a motion that we strike under board proclamations, all of that language, and just say, the School Board of Manatee County does not do proclamations. School board members are, are welcome to, something of the effect that school board members are welcome to, in their board comments, celebrate or mention any important events that they would like to, to mention. So that's my motion.
It would have to be, well, Ms. Felton?
An amendment, amendment to the motion is what I'm saying.
Right.
That's, I'm, to amend, to amend the motion to strike the language. And the amendment would be underneath board proclamations to strike that language. And then to just say, the School Board of Manatee County does not do proclamations. School board members in their personal board comments may make mention of important events. And that's, I would like to amend the original motion.
Okay, we have two speakers let up this.
Okay.
Ms. Felton?
I feel that, and I've, I said it the last time, that proclamations aligned to academic standards or required instructional topics identified in Florida law or Florida State Board of Education administrative rules should not be political. I don't think that they are. I feel that when we have proclamations that come down from the White House, if we're doing the same proclamations, I don't think that that should be a big deal if they are related, if they are related to our curriculum. I'm not saying everything that, you know, that comes out of the White House is a great thing. I did not mean for that to sound the way that just sounded. That, that was not what I meant. But what I meant is, regardless of administration, I don't think that everything that is, needs to be proclaimed. But when we have things that are relating to required instruction in our curriculum, I feel that it is incumbent upon us to make a point of that. To talk about how it affects our particular county, our particular students, and to call attention to that. Because as we are all elected by our county, by our, you know, our individual districts, that we should recognize the contributions of those people. And as most of our proclamations tend to relate to people that work for us, whether it's, you know, we're doing Teacher Appreciation Week, or Month, or whatever, or, you know, Memorial Day, or any sort of recommendation. We have people who fit into all of those categories, who work for us, and whose children are in our schools. And so for me, I, I feel that it's important that we recognize that.
Sure.
Mr., are you done? You done?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Madam Chair, do you want to deal with his motion first to see if he gets a second?
Well, I wanted to get your, well, okay. It would be amendment to this policy.
Yeah, because you've got, you've got a motion, but we don't have a second.
Right, you don't have a second.
So I was not going to second.
Yeah, neither was I. I just wanted to, to make sure I'm commenting the right place. It's fine, I can say this now. No, but I think that your concerns are actually taken care of in the, I'm, I'm going to support what we have on the agenda as published because I think, I hear you, and I know this is an issue that's, that's very important to you because we have, we have gone over this a few times. But I think even your concern is covered in the published policy because its proclamations must be submitted to the Communications Department no later than 28 days prior. So that 28 days prior allows the superintendent to talk to each board member individually, so it's not a public setting. So the superintendent can get a feel for the board, you know, where's the board? What's the board consensus on this proclamation? And then, as I, as I've said previously when we've come up, I think a board majority like, like, like they always do, a board majority should carry the day. It doesn't have to be four to zero, five to one. Five to zero, four to one.
Five, yeah.
So I'm going to support it as it is. Thank you.
And, and just my comment, you know, because it sounds like you're not going to get a second. It says requested proclamations will be considered for a board agenda in accordance with School Board Bylaw 0165.1. So to Mr. Kennedy's point, there would be the opportunity to either allow it to go on the agenda or not through board briefings. And it, the proclamation says will be submitted to the Communications Department. So it's going to go through that vetting procedure and then brought to the board members. So.
So what if the, and I'll, I'll bring Mr. Penley on the conversation. What if we do, I mean, okay, we've done, we've done one based on race, which is African-American, okay? And then the Armenian population comes to us and says, "I want my pop, I want my proclamation because during World War I, which is part of your best standards, you talk about World War I, and during World War I, the Ottoman Empire perpetrated a genocide against the Armenian people, and so I want my, I want my proclamation because you did it for slavery, so I want my proclamation." And then are we going to, so what's going to happen? In our board briefings, like, three of us say yes and two of us say no? And then it goes on the ag, hold on, Ms. Felton, just a second. And so that goes on the agenda? Or, or does it have to be all five of us agree? And then what happens if the Armenian people say, "Well, I don't care whether, why is it on the agenda? Like, it's a viewpoint discrimination." And then what if the Japanese-Americans come to us and say, "Well, you know, there was that internment that happened during World War II, and that's in your best standards, and I want that." What if the American Indian population comes to us and says, "You know, we got some bad treatment over the years and Trail of Tears and all that kind of stuff. We want our proclamation." I mean, can, who's, who's going to decide which one of these groups gets their proclamation and don't get, doesn't get their proclamation? And would that be some type of viewpoint discrimination on your part if we started doing it for, for this ethnic group of people, or this race of people? And we do it, they, this one gets a proclamation, but this one doesn't? I mean, do you see any, any legal problems or legal issues with that?
I believe because a proclamation has no legal effect, it would not be a board action that would be subject to a discrimination complaint.
Okay, fair enough. That's why you're supposed to know the answer to the question before you ask it.
Sorry.
Well, that's fair. But still, you know, but what if, so, so we would just be able to say no to them? Like, no, if three of us say no in the board briefing, then, and we know it's going to be voted down, then we just don't do it? And then?
On the agenda, you mean?
Well, because the, the point was made of, well, the, what we, what can happen here is, you know, Dr. Weisong can kind of get a feel during our board briefings. And if three of us don't want the Armenian genocide proclamation done, then, then we don't do it because it's only, it's going to be voted down probably either in the board, you know, because we'll pull it from the, it'll be pulled from the, if someone doesn't agree with it, pulled from the agenda, put into new business, debated, voted on. And so, and that's, and that's how, and we could just say, no, we're not going to do that one.
You can just say, no, we're not going to do that. It would be a majority vote.
Okay. Well, I still say, I'll still make the point then that even though there's no legal recourse against us, just as it happened with the county, it did cause a big political brouhaha over there with the Second Amendment issue as well as, and it got into the news and it got into the papers, as well as the lights on the bridge issue. And it, it just caused a big, you know, how we like to say we're boring? It wasn't boring. Right? That stuff got into the paper and caused some legal issues around it. But I made my point, I got it off my chest. Obviously, this is a democratic body and, and we will go with whatever the majority decides. So I didn't get my second, but that's okay. That's why it's a democratic body.
I just wanted to say that, you know, I don't think any of us want to get political.
Yeah.
And I think that if something came forward that seemed like it was, I don't think any of us would go, "Oh, yeah, let's throw this in there and see if we can suddenly become not boring." I don't think any of us would have that intention. I think that would be destructive and self-destructive. And I don't think any of us would consider doing anything like that. And, and if any group feels like that their proclamation is deeply related to the core of the growth of Manatee County, then maybe we should consider it. But, you know, we're, we're not living where the Ottoman Empire was. And so I don't know that that would be pertinent.
I will make the point that the only two organizations that came, during our, during our workshop that came up because we were, and said, "You have to do these proclamations," were overtly politically activist organizations. The NAACP and the League of Women Voters, which they're more than welcome to exercise their First Amendment rights, obviously. But no one else came up, no one else, that only politically activist organizations were the ones who came up and were in support of it. As a matter of fact, the word kind of got back to the school system that from those politically activist groups that if you don't do this, there will be consequences. So we know. So we know that they're politically active. It's all tied into identity politics and all that kind of stuff, but we're having a good debate.
You did, and, and your motion did lack a second.
Fair enough.
So we're back to the original motion to adopt this. So all, I guess we're ready to vote. And that passes 3 to 1. Okay. And now we are on new business, item number two. Superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of reimbursement resolution 2025-002 for expenditures for new high school AAA.
So moved.
And a second.
Okay.
Sorry, I shouldn't sigh in my second.
That's all right, that's all right. I'm ready to, no, I don't see anybody lit up, so.
Would you like me to, if I should, would you like me to clarify the item just for the public? No, that's fine.
Yes, yes, yes.
Board members, this resolution provides the opportunity, in the event the board decides to finance through a, a COPS or similar instrument, the construction costs for high school AAA, it gives you the opportunity to capture the expenses prior to financing and charge those to that financing. So for example, the architectural and initial design expenditures. That, that does not mean that you have to, it simply preserves the option for you to do so.
Thank you. Okay. We're ready to vote.
I forgot to hit motion, I'm sorry.
Right, there's no.
Sorry, I forgot to hit motion, that's my.
Yep, yep. That's all right, we have the motion in a second. And that passes 4, 4 0. Okay, item number four under new business.
Three.
Yeah, right, we're at four, right?
Three.
Three.
Oh, I'm sorry, three. Go ahead, Superintendent, sorry. I marked it as next.
Thank you, Chair. I recommend approval of the revised job description for lead guardian.
So moved.
Dang it, I almost going to do it this time.
Got the next one.
I'll second.
I forgot to hit motion again.
If you want to expand on that, sir?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The, this is a no-cost revision to the, again, job description for lead guardian, and then actually the next item is for the school safety guardians, so that lead guardians are their supervisors. And board members, you'll recall at the last meeting, we approved a technician job description, and it was noted that the training requirements for guardians had been updated by the legislature. Thank you, Chair, for pointing that out. And so this simply updates the two remaining job descriptions to reflect the new statutory training requirements that are handled for us by the Manatee Sheriff's Office.
Okay, thank you. I don't see anybody lit up to comment. Obviously, we were all briefed on this, so.
Did I forget to hit motion again? I did.
Yeah, you did the motion.
There we go, yep, yep, we're good.
And that passes 4 0. And now we're on number four, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair. I recommend approval of the revised job description for school safety guardian.
So moved.
Second.
We're, we're playing, don't want to sit up here. Anyone want to expand on that at all?
You guys can have it.
You guys good?
You're having so much fun over there, I, I don't want to interrupt your fun.
Okay.
You got some, you're in the groove, second, motion second, motion second. I'm just enjoying the show.
And ready to vote.
I thought you felt left out.
I'm enjoying the show. All good.
There we go.
And there we go. And that passes 4 0. And item number five under new business.
Thank you, Chair. I recommend revision of the job description and position of literacy coach.
So moved.
Second.
There you go, they got a rhythm going on. And I don't see anybody lit up, obviously. Again, we all reviewed these revisions during our briefings and prior to our briefings. I'm writing on another two votes, there we go. And that passes 4 0. And item number six, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair. This is a long recommendation, so my apologies. I recommend approval of the agreed-upon American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Raise Terms for 2024-25 in the amount of $2,497,519 from the General and Food Service Funds, and ratification of the superintendent's signature on memorandum of understanding for millage and millage carry-forward distribution in the amount of $6,887,333.
So moved.
Second.
And we have a speaker lit up, and I'm going to, go ahead.
Chair, may I?
Oh, sure.
May I start on this one? Sure, thank you. So board members, this is the long-awaited item to finalize the 24-25 contract for our AFSMI employees. As you're aware, we had prolonged collective bargaining processes this year, and I want to thank Mister Rinaldi, our Deputy Superintendent for Operations, Ms. Sellers, our Deputy Superintendent for Business Services, and the entire bargaining team who took us, led us through this process that culminates in raises for all of the employees, but with special attention to hard-to-fill areas, including our bus drivers, our vehicle mechanics, and our maintenance mechanics, and also a distribution of millage funds from our voters to our eligible AFSMI employees. This agreement also included language changes proposed by management and negotiated with the association. We reached agreement, the bargaining unit scheduled a ratification vote. We were notified that that vote occurred last Saturday and that the provisions were ratified by membership. So we're ready to move forward now with board approval. Board members, our, our payroll team has been working incredibly hard behind the scenes so that if you adopt my recommendation this evening, we will be able to put the bonus payments in employees' checks on May 16th, and then salary adjustments for every covered employee on the May 30th check, along with the retro payment back to July 1 of '24. And so our, our, our small but mighty payroll team will be able to wrap all of that up in the next two available paychecks. There is a paycheck on Friday, but obviously the payroll deadline has already passed, so they're working hard to get it in the next two immediate checks to wind down the school year. So appreciate the, the board's support through the process.
Ms. Felton.
I also just wanted to thank the, the staff for all of your hard work. I know this has been a very long process, and I also want to thank all of the members who came out and voted to get this taken care of and get this done on Saturday, and for being that invested in their, in their, their careers and, and with us, that, that they all turned out in such good numbers to participate and to vote. We, we've been working for you for this, and, and we're really glad to have it going forward.
Mister Kennedy.
Yeah, same. I just want to thank everybody involved, especially the small but mighty payroll team. I hope that tagline sticks, it's a good one. But Superintendent Wyson, I just had a question about communication to those employees. I know they kind of hear things through the grapevine, but is the district, I, now that we're out of ratification, I know we can't communicate with them during, but now that we're past ratification, is it possible for the district to just let that employee group know what, the information you just told us about payroll dates and what's coming?
Yes, we'll, we'll absolutely send something out. Again, presuming board approval momentarily, we will get something out to our employees so that they're very aware of the payroll time periods, and we, we fully expect that once we implement, there'll be questions. We did work with the association on, on a previous matter to have our payroll staff actually go to AFSMI and, or, I'm sorry, go out to the Matske building and meet with anyone who had questions, just because of the complexity of this and the retroactive payments. And so we'll likely do that again because we want everybody to be comfortable with the process and the numbers.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mister Tatum.
This might be potentially the shortest school board comment that's ever been made, so for those of you who worked on it, that's all I'll say about that.
And, and, and I'll take liberty of saying thank you to all of the staff because this was a very long process. We're going right into another unit session not long from now, and to the AFSMI group. It doesn't have to be this difficult. We're, we're here to help you, support you, and, and, and your unit, and we want you. And, and I think that this was a, a very lengthy and long, hard process, and I hope we can get beyond that for the next round. So that would be my final comment, and I think that, I think the unit's going to be very thankful when they get their checks. Okay? Any otherbody? Okay. And we had a motion and a second, correct? Okay. And that passes 4 to 0. Congratulations to that whole team.
Good job, team.
And item number seven, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair. Also a long recommendation. I recommend approval to advertise a notice of intent to amend school board policies, including new policies, and set a public hearing at the board meeting on June 10th, 2025, and the following policies are included in this package. Bylaw 0100, bylaw 0131 dot 1, and policies 1430 dot 035112, 5330 dot 04, 533, 5335 dot 02, 6111, 7510, 8405, 8406, 8407, 8500, and 8510.
Do you miss Gina telling you to read all those?
So moved.
Second.
And I hope everybody got that. I'm not going to ask them to repeat all that. Do you have anything else?
It's on the board work.
Do you have anything else there?
Yes, we can do it again. And board members, this is, all of these, all of these policies are, our policy revision proposals are posted on this agenda. We will workshop these on Friday so that if you have questions or revisions, Mister Chapman will be at the podium to answer those questions. And again, then we have kind of the wait period that gets us to the June 10th board meeting, and then probably the same cadence, once we approve this package, hopefully on June 10th, we'll then tee up another package of policy changes based on recommendations from Neola and then other things that are changing at the state board and in the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have a motion and a second.
We do.
And that also passes 4 0. And now we are on to item number 14 with new business, no superintendent recommendation. And under 14-1, I will actually take the lead on that. This is acceptance of the resignation of Ms. Johnson from the CFAC committee, and I just want to comment that I have communicated with her once she decided to submit her resignation, and part of her decision to do so was she didn't feel appreciated, and she is a very skilled and very professional person, and I think the CFAC presentation and the way that went down kind of tilted her to do the resignation. So I just want to say thank you to Ms. Johnson for all of her work that she did on the CFAC and the annual report that she poured her soul into, and all the hours that she gave up with her family to do that. So I'm looking for a motion for, for her, to accept her resignation.
So moved.
Second.
Can I hit motion? Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, certainly.
Yeah, no, I, it's been a long road for the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee, which will lead us into the next item, but I, I do want to thank Mrs. Johnson for her service and for the past few years. And going forward with the possible changes to the Audit Committee Charter, which, you know, we're going to introduce tonight for possible approval much later. But, you know, what, the CFAC has been in existence since basically 2019, and that, it's been through a lot of changes, it's been, been through a lot of different members, and a lot of discussions, and, and as you mentioned, a lot of time away from their jobs, their families, and so forth. And so anytime anybody leaves one of our committees, I think it's important, like you did, to, to stop and take a minute to thank them, so I just wanted to, to extend my thanks to. So, thanks, Madam Chair.
Mister Tatum.
Just want to thank Ms. Johnson for her service. Obviously, anybody who volunteers for the school system needs to be thanked for their service, that's it.
I'm sorry, I overlooked you.
That's okay. I also would like to thank Mrs. Johnson for her, her service. I've only been on the board five, maybe six months now, so I don't have a long relationship with the CFAC, but I am not a math person. Anybody who's willing to sit there and pore over numbers ad nauseam is amazing to me, and I appreciate everything they do, because I would not want that job, and they're volunteers. So I appreciate it doubly. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're ready for the vote. Okay. And that passes 4 0. And again, thank you, Ms. Johnson, for everything you did. And to 14-2, discussion regarding Audit Committee Charter. I will let Mister Kennedy take that.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, as the, this board has discussed previously about possibly rolling the function of the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee into the Audit Committee, what I came up with here at the, with the board's approval, with my board colleagues' approval, I came up with a, just a draft idea for what the new Audit Committee Charter could look like with the inclusion of the, the oversight of the one mil, which is provided for by three resolutions. And it's, it's now a four-page document. I've just made a couple of like minor, minor changes. The substantial change is on page four, which there is now a whole new paragraph, which is titled Mission: One-Mil Referendum Certax, which this charter gives the, gives the Audit Committee, the Audit Committee, the, tasked them with the job of producing, I'll just read the last line, "The Audit Committee shall produce an annual report to satisfy the legal requirements of the above resolutions," which are named above in the, in that chapter. So board colleagues, really, that's the important piece here. The other items that you can see in green are new, and they were just some kind of little technical changes, not even technical, just I reworded a few things that I thought made it sound better. The other change I wanted to, it's a small one, but on page one, under composition of the committee, I just changed that to three to seven members. The current charter says that the Audit Committee shall have, shall, is it shall? Will. It says the committee will consist of seven members. I included an edit in there to give the, the committee flexibility to have three to seven members. But the substantial change is on page four with the one, with the one-mil oversight. So again, this was just an introduction to the public. The Audit Committee is going to meet on, that, the meeting has been pushed back, or at least Chairman Daniel of the committee wanted to push it back, so I think we will. I just haven't seen the definitive date yet, but, so I will discuss this with the Audit Committee on May 14th at their, at the Audit Committee's next meeting. That will then give us time for the board to take a look at it, consider it, and then we can, we can approve. at it, consider it, and then we can, we can approve a new charter at either our May or June meeting, and then we'll be ready to go, going into the new fiscal year for the Audit Committee.
I guess my amendment on this would be, not, maybe not the, this charter for the audit, but to maybe talk to the Audit Committee about having a joint session with the CFAC?
Yeah, I can certainly.
Right, recommend that, and have Ms. Harrigan maybe attend, and probably put together some kind of a plan to work together. I mean, if there was, I mean, no one wants to sit in a four-hour Audit Committee meeting, but if there was a carve-out time for the CFAC to work with the Audit Committee on items that they all fall onto this, that they could, might bring up to the Audit Committee to look at with them.
Okay. You know what I'll do, Madam Chair, is before the Audit Committee meeting, I, I can come up with an alternate idea, or maybe another paragraph that could be added? Because like, what it sounds like to me is we could add to the charter a subcommittee?
Yes.
And then that way, to your point, the people like Susan Harrigan, thank you, Susan, for your service at the district as well, or, you know, folks who are interested in that function, they can come for the first or the last hour of the, of the Audit Committee meeting. And then we would have to write into the qualifications, is it under composition? Oh, it's under composition of the committee on page one. There is some experience requirements to serve on the Audit Committee, so we would, you know, just have to work with that a little bit to, you know, somebody who's serving on the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee may not necessarily be a CPA, or somebody with extensive experience in school finances, which I'm, I'm not reading it right from the charter, but especially experienced members. But I, I'll be happy to come up with a, that possibility.
Yeah. I, I think that having something to say that they could, there would be a joint session with the CFAC.
Just one, just one piece of feedback?
I would say at least twice a year, a joint session. I mean, they can meet.
Are you okay with the subcommittee idea, though?
Yeah, I would be. I, I would like to, maybe you can reach out to the Chair as much as I can, but I will talk to Ms. Harrigan and see what her opinion is of having like a, a layer of subcommittee in there, instead of, because I don't think that they need to be there every meeting.
I agree.
I think when they find things that are of concern, they can come to the Audit Committee with the list of things that maybe they were finding in the Audit Committee, but the CFAC Committee doesn't know, and vice versa. If the CFAC found something, and they want the Audit Committee to look into, I think that joint relationship would benefit everybody. I don't, I think it would pull some of the pressure off of the district to look at that, because you've got two different committees looking, and it might be the same topic. We don't know, because you're looking at one thing, the CFAC's looking at another.
Okay, well.
So that's kind of like what I would.
Yeah, I can come up with something, and then obviously, we're going to have more bites at the sample down the road, and.
Right.
And Mr. Choate will be here, so he can, he can weigh in as well.
Right.
But no, I'll, I'll take everything you just said, and I can incorporate into a new idea.
Okay.
Or adding on to this idea.
Right.
Thank you for that input.
Okay, perfect. So this isn't really an action item. This is more.
This is just an, just an information.
Right, a discussion. So does, anyone have anything else to add? Mr. Tatum, Ms. Bell?
No, I just wanted, I just like the idea of them each being able to share their own knowledge, because, you know, the CFAC obviously has very good understanding of what they do. The Audit Committee has a good understanding of what they do, and for them to be able to collaborate, I think is, is good.
Perfect. Right. Awesome.
Just a couple of comments. I, I do believe that combining the two will be what we help for both of them, will help improve the functioning of the CFAC. Couple thoughts on the draft that you have, Mr. Kennedy. The, the committee in the second, underneath composition of committee.
Yeah.
Like the one, two, three, four, fourth line down, it talks about the qualifications of the committee members. Have, you have to be a resident of the county grade, be a CPA active or retired, that's fine, or had employment experience in the school dis, employment experience in school district financial operations. That, that restricts the pool a little bit, right? Like if you're a finance officer for a big company or something, but you haven't, you're not, you're not a qualified CPA, but you were the, I don't know, I mean, it just seems like, you know, maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I can, I can include something.
Yeah, or you, you know, significant experience in financial management, or something like that.
Right.
Sure.
Okay. And then.
I like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then if we go under the administrative area, meet as needed, maybe there was a little discussion a second ago about this. We don't want them to meet quarterly, or maybe they don't even need to meet quarterly? Is that?
Right now, the schedule is every two months. The first Wednesday, every other month.
Okay. But it's up to them when they meet. We don't need to have them, doesn't need to be specified, you'll meet quarterly, or?
No, no, it's always just.
Whenever they need it. Okay. And then, let's see, second paragraph there, one, two, three, four, five lines down. If the BSIA position is vacant, which it is, right? Because we don't have an internal auditor.
It's been vacant for quite a while.
The committee shall communicate information requests directly to the board liaison. So are you the, are you the committee? So is, that's an extra administrative step, like you have to get informa, I don't know, it just seems, on the other hand, I mean, why, why did you add that? Do you feel like the committee's maybe not getting the information that they?
No, no.
Okay. It just seems like another administrative step that, why can't they just ask the staff directly instead of you, or the liaison, whoever that would be having?
Yeah, no, I'll be, if I may. Yeah, no, I'll be happy to explain where it came from. The, years ago, the years were running together, but there was a little bit of, there was a little debate between the committee and administration and staff, because there was a lot of information requests coming. Sometimes they were coming from individual members of the committee. So the board kind of hashed through a system whereby any information requests had to come from a majority of, of the committee. And then we created that, a channel through which information would flow, so that it would be the Chair, I think at the time, it was the Chair, Ms. Bell, as you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, in your experience, it's been, the Chair of the committee would make data requests of you, or of the administration. Did they go, did they go directly to you?
It would go through the, the assistant that was in there. At one time, Laura Cox was the assistant, that would then feed it through, so they could keep track of it. Kind of similar to the way you guys have Laura for the board. You know how we have Teresa Dalquest now for the Audit Committee?
Yeah.
So, so that we could keep track of it, and then she would disseminate it, it out. I think you would be the liaison that would convey what was talked about in the committee to the board.
Okay. But data request, currently data requests go through staff?
It should go through staff, so they can keep track of, make sure that, you know, they're responded to. Because in, in meetings, they, everybody sometimes has a difficult time remembering if the information got sent back out. So at least so that the record keeper, this was requested then, this was provided then, you know, that kind of thing.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. So, Mr. Tatum, I think what I can do after hearing that, because I was just going on the language that was here, and wanted to edit that, because we haven't had a board staff internal auditor. But I can just kind of edit that whole section to match what we're currently doing.
And I agree with you. Maybe you don't want individual committee members, but, you know, the Chair of the Audit Committee or something, so there's one focal point. It just seems like an extra administrative step to go to a board member, and the board member has to forward it. I don't.
No, yeah, I think you're right. Yeah, I think you're right. Let's just keep it, keep it simple.
And then lastly, under the last paragraph, External Audit Services, the Audit Committee will report to the School Board on acceptance of the audit and related reports, and review any corrective action plans. Is that, is that repetitive of what the mission is up top, or is that something?
Well, this, this section is just about external audit specifically. I haven't made any changes to that section, so.
Okay. It's not my forte, the audits. Every time we go through them, I kind of just sit and work. Deer in a headlights, sometimes. External auditors, internal auditors, internal accounts, this, internal account. Okay, that's all good. I.
Yeah, no, this is all kind of ongoing.
And that's all the comments I have. Thank you for considering my comments.
Mm-hmm. Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay.
Good to go.
I'm with Mr. Tatum on this. My eyes are starting to cross, so.
All right. Well, we, actually, that was, that was just a discussion. There was no action that needed to be taken on that. And now we're into item number 15. Thank you all for waiting and holding out for the reports and presentation. And I will bring up Mr. Johnson and Dr. Breslin.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Chair.
Madam Chairman.
Good evening, Chair.
Of course, sir.
Can I make a point of order real quick?
Oh, yeah, sure.
And I would like, I would like everybody's opinion on this, but in seeing that it's already 8:35 in the evening, and that, try and reconsider the staff members that are still here, but is it, if we would move, on the other hand, they're here and they're ready to go. But I would just like to get everybody's opinion, whether, I don't want them to have to stay till 9:15, 9:30, but if they're here and they're ready to go and they want to do it, but we could do this at another board meeting or at a workshop, I'm just throwing that out on the table for the, maybe the superintendent, and it's up to, you know. I, I just don't want people to be here till 9:00, 9:30 at night, when they don't really have to be here. We could do this at another time. But I'm, I'm willing to stay.
I appreciate that, and I did talk to them during the break, but during that break, we didn't have all of these other items that we were discussing. So I will defer to the presenters and to the superintendent, if you would like to put this on a future agenda.
Or Friday's workshop?
Or, or Friday's workshop even. It was advertised for today. That is my only concern.
I will, I'm willing to stay, you know, I'm here to serve until midnight or whatever.
Okay, then I'll do this.
Not past midnight, though.
Okay, not past.
I'll do this.
I get overtime for the next day.
Yeah, I turn into a pumpkin after midnight, so.
But my point is, I'm, I'm not, I'm willing to stay as long as, I just want, it's up to them.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. So I will, I will look to the presenters and get the nods or not, and/or I can do, ask for a motion to delay it. But it looks to me like they're ready to go, and Superintendent is nodding yes, so.
Okay, that's fine.
I will say, go for it.
Okay.
And to be respectful, absolutely. To be respectful of, of the board's time, of course. We'll be, we'll be concise during the presentation, but I appreciate you giving the team the opportunity to share information about our VPK programs with you and the community, as well as some changes to VPK accountability that are taking place this year. So I have with me Dr. Breslin, our Executive Director for School Support and Family Engagement, Dr. Sheila Halpin, who's our Director of Early Learning, and as you know, Mr. McCarthy, who's our Director of Assessment and Research. So take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and thank you, members of the board. Mr. Superintendent, I'm here to talk about our VPK program, which you have heard many things about over the years, but more specifically, how it relates to accountability and, and sharing some celebrations on some really good data we're seeing from the results of our great teachers, our schools, and Dr. Halpin and her team. So just a reminder, VPK, it's our free daily three-hour program, is what we're referring to. It's funded by the Division of Learning through the Department of Education. Of course, we also have the wraparound programs that you all know very well about. What we haven't gotten into quite as deeply is that all of the learning that takes place in those classrooms is built on Florida's early learning and development standards. Those were approved by the State Board of Education back in 2017, so they've been in place for some time. It's focused on eight domains. You can see some sampling here of those domains. And you'll see, as we go through the presentation, the work that Dr. Halpin and her team, and of course, our school principals lead in meeting these standards. And then you'll see that data as prepared by a wonderful research and assessment team led by Mr. McCarthy.
Good evening. We did want to share that all of the pictures that you're seeing in the presentation are from your VPK classrooms. Just to give you some context, our school district offers the VPK program free of charge to families as either the 540 instructional school year program, or the 300 instructional hour summer program. Families may select either the school year or the summer program, but not both. And all children who reside in Florida, turning four by September 1st of the school year, are eligible to participate in a VPK program. The school different, district offers a VPK choice window during the month of January, where families can select a school site and program that best matches their child's needs. And we currently have 112 pre-K classrooms. Fifty-nine of those are VPK classrooms, serving 859 students, with 272 on a waitlist in 27 school sites. We also offer 53 pre-K ESE classrooms, currently serving 667 ESE pre-K students at 29 school sites. And all Florida VPK students in Florida are required to participate in the FAST Star Early Literacy Assessment.
I ask a question real quick on that page, please?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
If, if a child is in an ESE status, what's, can they go down to the age of three and sign up at the age of three, or what are the rules on that?
Yes, at the age of three, they can come through our evaluation center, and receive a screening, and see if they qualify for one of our ESE seats.
Okay, and so, and that, they can go all the way down to the age of three for that program?
Correct.
Great. Okay. That's the only question I had. Thank you.
Also, and I'm, I'm maybe wrong, but I remember reading somewhere, which is why I need verification, that if a, if a family wants to do the, during the year program, they cannot do the summer program, and if they do the summer program, they cannot do the year program. Is that right?
That is correct. Certificate of Eligibility is only good for one or the other.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the biggest portion of the new VPK performance metric that the state is using is the Class Composite Score. The Class Composite Score, it's a, I believe it's a nationally-used, evidence-based observational tool, where staff from the ELC that have been trained in this system go into our classrooms, I think, four times a year. And it's used to measure the effectiveness of the classroom interactions, specifically between teachers and the students and children in those classrooms. The class system focuses primarily on three domains: emotional support of the children, the classroom's organization, and the organization of the instruction within that classroom. The other two portions of the state's, new state's VPK accountability metric are, all, both come from the FAST Star Early Literacy Test, as part of the Fast Progress Monitoring System the state is now using. The first part is student achievement. That focuses on eligible students who have completed 50% of the instructional hours for VPK throughout the year, and how they are doing on the spring or PM3 Star Early Literacy Test for VPK. And for that, they use the state's kindergarten readiness cut, to say those students have met achievement. And then kind of the, the other part of, that comes from Star Early Literacy, is the learning gains. They measure learning gains a little differently, but it's looking between PM1 and PM3 at student growth over, per month, basically.
Good question?
Yeah, I do, I do, if I could, real quick, thanks. Evan, I just want to make sure I understand the, the PM, PM1 and PM3 FAST Star Early Literacy. So that is, so there's a PM2 in there somewhere, obviously?
Yeah. There is a PM2, but it, it's not used at all for accountability. It's just used for measuring where our students are at along the way throughout the year.
And this is progress monitoring for four-year-olds, correct?
Four going on five.
Four, yeah, possibly. They, they could turn five after September 1st, yes, sure. And then what is that, what does that progress monitoring look like to the, to the four- or five-year-old?
It's the same Star Early Literacy Test we use for our kindergarten students statewide. It's.
Like number of questions, skill set?
So it'll be like, something like, it'll be like, there'll be like, three pictures, three options that are just big pictures, like which of these objects starts with the C sound, cuh. And it'll be like, a chicken, that's, I don't know, terrible example.
Cat. Cat is the correct answer.
That's a good one. And it'll just give a bunch of examples, and I'll have to pick what picture, or C, or be a bunch of letters. Which of these is the letter L or something?
So it's, it's kind of like, just generally like, letters and colors, or is it a little deeper than that?
Like, letters, shapes, numbers, letter sounds. It's the primary focus of Star Literacy.
All right, well, we, we get them started early on high-stakes testing in the state of Florida.
Yes, sir.
That was actually my.
Editorial comment.
Thought over here. I've said from the day as that testing is stupid, and I'm going to say it one more time, testing is stupid when we test kids incessantly, which we do in Florida.
Which is no one's fault here.
Ah, I know. It's not our fault. It's not our fault. We, we, we don't always want to test kids all the time. And as we're currently in testing season, huh. But, so is this part of stat? part of statute that we were required to do this testing in, with four-year-olds or four, five-year-olds?
Yes, that was part of the statutes that they passed, I believe, two and a half, three years ago, implementing the VPK through whatever progress monitoring system.
Okay. I probably have another question later on that, but, okay.
Anybody else?
Okay, so, those three components combined make up the, what they call the VPK Performance Metric. If you want to go to the next slide, the VPK Performance Metric then turns into a VPK Performance Designation. This one very specifically cannot be a letter grade per statute, and you can see the five different kind of designations they use for VPK programs to evaluate them. The most important thing here is being meets expectation and above keeps you out of any state monitoring or consequences, basically. So you can see, if you look at that district run line here, our VPK sites are doing phenomenally well. All of them are meets expectation and above, and we're at about 90% of above expectations or excellent for VPK sites.
That's great.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so that was, that was last year's data. This year's data, our VPK sites are still doing really well. I want to point out the district run line. Our students are starting out very low. The early emergent line, I wrote down what this meant somewhere. So, for the early emergent classification in Star Early Literacy, that's meaning that we had 68%, or no, 74% of our students came in, and they're only beginning to identify colors, shapes, numbers, and letters. If they're falling under early emergent. If you're getting into late emergent, we have another 28 or 23% of our students who are coming in, and they can identify most letters and can match most of those letters to sound. So we're starting off with only 3% of our students that are coming into our VPK sites that are already able to have mastered all their alphabets and the letter sounds. And from that starting point on PM1, we're already up to 20% of our students. We've made massive growth from there. We're moving so many students upwards so far just through PM2. It'll be really cool to see what that PM3 data comes back looking like.
And if I could comment on this slide, this just, this is a testament of how we can take a student that has very little understanding.
Yeah.
And by the first time that we test them, the results that we have. But it's also, I would say, to anyone that's going to bring their child to VPK, perfect opportunities, little sticky notes all over with colors and shapes and all of those little, you know, one-line reading books is, that would be such a great improvement on where we are today. I think, I think we can get there. It's just a matter of getting those, that stuff in those kids again.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. Breslin.
And so, these, these kids are not our ESE VPK kids, right? These are standard, regular enrollment kids.
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, and this is where I'm going to encourage anybody who's listening this late at night to, if you have a small child in your life, read to them, show them colors, show them numbers, teach them the alphabet, so they can get a jump on this. They are sponges. They are so anxious to learn, obviously, from our test results. They go in there and they just absorb everything we put in front of them, but if they come in with it before that, then it helps them grow even faster.
Right. And I think, if I may, just plug SOAR and FOR tomorrow night.
I was going to say that. I was going to say that, too.
Anyone is listening and is interested in learning ways to work with their child on literacy.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep.
The final way the state gives us to look at those VPK FAST results is kindergarten readiness, going back to that student achievement part of the VPK designations. And here, once again, you can see the phenomenal growth in our district-run schools, from 17% of our VPK kids kindergarten-ready in the fall, up to 57% as of just winter in January. That's 40% growth so far this year.
That's huge.
Which is amazing.
Yeah.
All right.
Go ahead.
Just, just quick, when is PM3? Has it already happened, or it's at the end of the next?
For VPK, the PM3 window runs from, I believe, May 1st through May 31st.
Correct.
Oh, so it's all of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
And most, and most of them will test later in the window, usually.
Oh, okay.
Give those students as much time as possible to learn.
And then, in your experience, do you see, generally speaking, obviously, you see enormous effects from when they first get there, and then PM2 is, did you say December?
PM2 is, it's like December through January. I think that they mostly test...
Okay, about halfway through their, through their quote-unquote school year. Yeah, I mean, just incredible growth. I'm just curious, and what that will look like, you know, I'm just looking at district run. We went from 17% kindergarten-ready, PM1, PM2 to 57% kindergarten, like you mentioned, incredible, incredible learning gains. So, what would be, going from 17 to 57, what would be a attainable number for PM3? Like, 57 to, and, I'm not going to hold you to this, I'm just curious.
So, we haven't had this data in this way before, so...
Oh, okay, okay.
Especially kind of getting countywide data, it's the first time I've got my hands on anything like this, but...
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
So, you can tell me about the summer.
Yeah.
We'll have some actual data to look at.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anytime.
And we wanted to end that we provide holistic support to both our classrooms and to our families. And as you know, you have a phenomenal early learning family support team that goes out, and we've really, in the last two years, targeted our PL for our teachers in our classrooms, and we've also invested in classroom materials that support that PL in the classrooms. You have a leadership team that has weekly Elsong Call conversations with the teachers. We've also implemented progress monitoring in our classrooms, going out and doing data chats with our teachers and our principals, and we also have the quarterly newsletters that we provide to our staff. But in addition to that, you know that we also serve our families. So we have our SOAR and FOR programming that is going on. We created a quarterly family newsletter that we send home to all the families, incorporating all the tips that you just spoke about. How can you support those literacy skills and math skills at home? We also had individual backpacks, so if a child wasn't making progress in the timeframe that we had expectations for them, we created literacy backpacks and math backpacks that we sent home to the families. And then we have our Summer Bridge Program for any child that qualifies that needs some additional support over the summer. We're hoping that that won't be many children. We're anticipating our data's going to look really, really good for our final progress monitoring time.
And, if I may, for the public, you have SOAR program tomorrow.
Yes.
Where and what time is that?
So, our SOAR and FOR remake event will be held at the Bishop Museum tomorrow from 5:30 to 7:00. It's a free event, as always. Families can get into the Bishop Museum just to tour the museum, but then we set up 25 literacy, math, and community tables that families can come around, meet actual teachers, receive materials free of charge to take home, learn how to use those materials to support their child's literacy and math development.
And, if I may?
Yes.
Also, as, as Mr. Kennedy and I, and, and the superintendent, and several other people in this room, we're at the SOAR and FOR Storybook Trail at Tom Bennett Park. Would you please let the public know a little bit more about that?
Oh, SOAR and FOR has expanded out to our county parks, so we actually have two storybook trails, as Ms. Felton just mentioned, at Tom Bennett Park, and also at Lincoln Park. And it is a way for families to enjoy being outside together, enjoying our beautiful county parks, but we deconstructed storybooks where families can actually walk through the park, reading a story with literacy tips. It's also incorporated on AutoCast, so if families aren't literate or don't read English, they're able to utilize the app to have that story read to them in another language and learn the literacy tips as they're going through the park. So it's a great way to incorporate literacy in neighborhoods in a unique way.
And if you need to get out of the house because the little ones are driving you crazy, this is a good way to do it.
It's awesome.
It is.
I always have the rain opening for the first one, and it was awesome.
Yes.
It rained.
It did rain.
Yeah. I remember that. Okay. Anybody else?
No. Can I just say that I think we have the best early learning team in the state and the world? I'm going to say the world, in the state, but definitely, the, the things that we do for our, our families with young children are absolutely incredible. Every time you guys present something new, I'm just like, wow, that is so neat! And I wish everybody knew about it and would, would participate because you guys do incredible work, and I am just immensely grateful and proud of you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can I do that again?
Yes, you can.
Well, thank you all again for this opportunity and staying up late with us tonight. It's our pleasure to come and present to you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Very awesome. And that takes us to information only, which we have nothing under item 16, and that goes to updates. So we have instructional update. Mr. Jensen.
Thank you very much. I echo, one of the greatest privileges of my professional career has been the opportunity to work with the people you saw in front of you tonight. Piggybacking on our, our progress monitoring conversation around pre-K, this week really kicks off our state testing window in Manatee County. End-of-year testing's already started with the K2 Star and ACE testing this week, and it really ramps up on May 1st. Science begins May 1st. Then next week, we have reading, U.S. History and AP exams beginning, the week of 512 math, and the week of 519 civics. And I just, you know, reminder to all of our students and families, attendance is key in the month of May. Please, please, please get a good night's sleep and enjoy a strong breakfast at home or at school, and most importantly, even when things seem difficult, try your hardest and persevere. I'd also like to recognize our school media specialists because April was School Library Month, and our media specialists play a key role in creating amazing learning experiences for our students. So I just want to thank them for the role they play in our school communities and the work they do with our students. And next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, so I wanted to say thank you to our dedicated teachers who I know have worked exceedingly hard this year. The favorite part of my job is getting into our classrooms and seeing the kinds of learning experiences our teachers create for students, and they're valued, and I truly appreciate them. Our seniors' last day is May 12th with graduations beginning on May 13th through 19th, so I look forward to seeing you at graduations. We also have a number in the ACT department, we have a number of teachers, this is a new initiative this year that's pretty exciting, about 40 teachers have registered to take computer science coursework through the University of Florida because of a state grant we were able to apply for. And so those teachers will be learning computer science skills and then using those to hopefully apply for their computer science certification, which allows us to offer even more advanced computer science coursework in the school district of Manatee County, providing more acceleration opportunities for our students. We've also had 76 CTSO students placed first at the state competition as individuals or groups. Most are going to continue to the national level over the summer, and so we'll be bringing you those students early next school year as an update in how they performed at the national level. Skills USA has their state competition this week in Jacksonville. Students from Bay Shore and Southeast are participating. Students from Parrish are competing at DECA National Competition in Orlando this week. And then we also have Mills, McNeil, Hale, and Mona Jane Vex Robotics students competing at the World Competition in Dallas, Texas, the week of May 11th. So we have, just like we started the meeting with tonight, we have exceptional students traveling the state and the country to, to compete against the best and brightest from across the country. We also have some of the best and brightest at Best Technical School in the state of Florida, which is MTC. We have, they inducted last week 142 students into the National Technical Honor Society.
Wow.
They had 71 inductees into the National Adult Education Honor Society, and both are the highest numbers in the history of the school. They have over 100 students and advisors competing in the Skills USA state competition in Jacksonville. And as a reminder to our community, they have a summer day camp where juniors or seniors can participate in a program of their interest for a day at the main or east campus over the summer. So if we have any students or families interested in pursuing that opportunity at MTC over the summer, they should contact their school's college and career advisor for more information and registration. Thank you.
Very good. And up next is operational update.
Good evening, Borum Dammers. Dr. Weisong, give you a quick update on human resources. We recently had a operations fair at Wakeland on the 17th. It was lightly attended. We only had 37 attendees. However, custodial made two offers. Food service was able to make nine offers, including one kitchen manager, and transportation made three offers. Presently with transportation, we have six bus drivers, one part-time driver, and 10 attendants that are queued up for training. Our drivers are getting their permits at this point, and as soon as that's done, we'll be having our next training class, so we've got a nice queue. In regards to teachers and para, at MTC this past Saturday, the 26th, we had our big spring kickoff. 541 people registered, 375 attendees, which is pretty good, 70% showed up. In addition to that, I'd like to recognize we had 31 human resource and benefit staff members that were there chaperoning and coordinating the event, so we appreciate that. Pretty good numbers. Offers were made to 79 teachers, 19 teacher aides and para professionals, one teacher assistant, so a total of 99 offers were made. We couldn't get to 100, right at 99. But keep in mind, with the Harvey campus opening up and the Lake Manatee, there are still a number of open positions that we're going to be recruiting for, and keeping that in mind, our, our next teacher and para virtual job fair is scheduled for June 5th from 9 o'clock till noon, so recruitment will continue. The next operational job fair has been scheduled for June 24th. Time will be from 9 o'clock till noon. We have not determined the location at this point. We are maybe looking at somewhere in East County, because we've been doing a lot in Wakeland, so we want to kind of, kind of spread it out a little bit, so we're looking at an East County location as well. And Food and Nutrition Services, they're always keeping busy and doing unique things. They celebrated Earth Day on Tuesday, the 22nd. Special menus serving featured fresh strawberries, blueberries, my favorite, along with flour cookie as a treat. Cafeterias were decorated, and many of our staff dressed for the occasion, including the Myaca Elementary School, they dressed as flowers and flower pots. And I have pictures if you want to do that, too.
That would have been, sorry.
As part of the USDA Farm-to-School Grant, Braden River High School harvested their first crop of lettuce to be served at the salad station in the cafeteria. Numbers are big. The salad station is a daily option for the student, allows them to customize their own salad with protein, vegetables, toppings of choice. On Tuesday, 76 pounds of lettuce were harvested and brought to the cafeteria. An additional lettuce harvest will be happening in the next couple of weeks, so we're into the lettuce right now. Transportation, they begun working the summer school routes. We have 27 bus drivers that have been assigned to summer school. We're expecting about 25 routes. There are seven drivers signed up to do all of the field trip programs that we offer, that are offered over the summer, and we have 41 bus attendants that are currently signed up for the summer, so we've got a good summer group as well. In addition, we've secured three drivers for the food service, for the buses, for Food and Nutrition Services. They're estimating 15 stops at this point. They're still working through the logistics, but it will be in parks, and some sites will be serving just lunch, and others will be serving both lunch and breakfast, so that's moving up. And on behalf of the negotiation team from ASME, I really want to thank you all for the support. You helped us work through some unique financial, as well as some unique language, and we've always felt supported, and we really appreciate that, so thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Legal update?
I was made aware today of a possible encroachment onto school property at King Middle School. I have drafted a letter. I gave a copy to the superintendent this evening, and Mr. Pendley looked at my letter, made some corrections, so I'll be writing, sending out a cease and desist letter to the party that we believe has encroached on the school board property.
Okay.
What, what does that mean legally to encroach?
They built a concrete structure, kind of like, let's call it a concrete fence. I mean, it's a very substantial concrete structure, fence-like structure. And it is, according to our survey, it is nine or ten feet onto the property of King Middle School. This is not, it's not like inches. It's significant. My understanding is that somebody on our team did approach the gentleman who owns the property, and he indicated he had his survey. And so my letter does politely ask him for a copy of his survey while sending him a copy of our survey. But he has no fence permit from Manatee County. I did check that this afternoon. So right now, it is just an issue. So it may, it may be resolved amicably, or it may not. So, but the letter's going out tomorrow.
Okay.
Does it indicate, are you talking the west side of the property?
It's against residential property.
Okay.
So it's the south side?
Which would be?
The south side.
The south side, right, right. Okay.
Because the park is north.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Mr. Penley?
No, I have no dates.
You have no dates? Okay. Thanks to superintendent.
Thank you, Chair and Board members. I've trimmed out some of the things I was going to talk about tonight in honor of the lateness of the hour. It's been a while since we've been together this late for a board meeting, which is a good thing. There were seventeen items on tonight's consent agenda. Board members, I thank you for approval of consent. Notably, there were three agreements that you approved this evening to create new apprenticeship training programs at Manatee Technical College. We're very excited to take that next step, and my thanks to Mr. Wagner, as always, for his leadership at MTC and at the state level. In conversation with the Chair, with Chair Choat, we, we're going to add an apprenticeship workshop topic sometime this summer, just so that the experts can come in and really walk you through the structure of those programs and the opportunities that are out there for students. We think that will be very informative for the public, for our, particularly our middle and high school parents, and we'll all learn a little more as well. So just a note there. Although, we are definitely in that time of year where there are lots of events, all of us have multiple evening activities most nights. I won't, again, I won't walk through all the events that we've all been at. I know that some of you will select different items. I do want to say that I've recently had visits to Seabreeze Elementary with Mr. Kennedy, two visits to McNeil Elementary with Mr. Tatum, and then had the privilege of being at Anna Maria Elementary this morning. And Board members, our schools are doing incredible work in the closing days of the school year. And my hats off to our faculty and to our administrators, who are just creating lots of joyful experiences. I think the Leadership Day at McNeil that some of you were at with me is a day I won't forget. Probably for the rest of my career, it was very inspiring. We, of course, amidst, we've got several athletic teams still in playoff contention at the district and regional level. We've got arts events that are wrapping up for the year. Testing, we're twenty, we're two days away, less than forty-eight hours away, from the start of state testing. And our students have done remarkable work despite a lot of challenges this year. So we're just very proud, we're a very proud leadership team as we move into assessments. And then, of course, Board members, we'll be spending almost every night together between May thirteen and May twentieth at graduation. And I know that our principals and graduation coordinators are locking down all of those last details. Counselors are helping kids wrap up with those final requirements so that they can walk and earn their diploma. And again, we're very grateful to all of them. Couple of logistical notes for the board and the public. We, of course, are continuing with the rezoning process. And as I said at the last meeting, we're in kind of the quiet phase where the staff is working to meet the next step in the policy, which is the development of three maps that will be published when complete. And then there'll be five public meetings, and likely a board presentation, we're thinking at the next meeting, May twenty, just to provide an overview. And we'll start getting communication out regarding the dates, times, and locations of those public meetings. And again, Board members, the intention is to put some proposals out on the table prior to summer break, to take no action over summer break, but to use that time to get feedback and really consider that feedback and work as a team, not only to answer questions, but to see if we can improve on the proposals that we put out there. And then we'll roll into the next school year and continue the process. And then, also, Board members, our next meeting together is on Friday for the workshop. A reminder that we have an exempt meeting on safety and security close to the public starting at nine a.m., and then we have a ten a.m. or as soon as possible thereafter with three topics on the agenda. I do want to acknowledge that we had previously said that May second would be the date we would talk about the charter schools and the Surtax issues. Mr. Dai is out of town, and we wanted you to have the benefit of your legal counsel and his historical work. And so that was the reason for the adjustment to May twenty-third. We will also do the capital budget that day, and it will be helpful to hopefully have clarity on the state budget. As you know, the legislature was scheduled to finish on Friday. That is not going to happen. We do not have a state budget. And although we don't have to have that information for the 523 workshop, if it does conclude before then, it does provide some helpful context. But again, we have full plans to do that workshop now on Friday, May twenty-third. And those are my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Madam Chair, I have a question for the superintendent real quick. Just clarification on the meetings tomorrow. I got a call today about a potential eight-thirty meeting, then it was on the calendar. It was, that's fine, I just want to make sure it's not happening.
That is not happening. That was a hold that was briefly explored. We're not, not quite ready for that conversation yet. So again, nine o'clock shade or exempt meeting on safety and security will be our first meeting on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. Okay.
And then that will lead into our normal workshop.
Right.
Right, right. Okay. All right. Thank you, Superintendent. Board comments with Mr. Kennedy, Tatum, Felton, and myself.
The hour is semi-late, so I'll be super quick and just thank the superintendent and team for all this work. You guys are seeing this district through. I know tonight at the meeting, we get updated. I know it's the tip of the tip of the iceberg. There's so many good things going on in this district. And, you know, there's a lot of really amazing employees. We had on the HR document tonight, we got a few people that are thirty-plus years, and it's, you know, we're coming into the last month, the culmination of all this work everybody's been doing. And so as Mr. Jensen said, let's just finish strong. Make sure you get a good night's sleep and have a meal. Make sure you eat something and bring it home. Bring it home for yourself and your family and your school. And, you know, I just want to thank my board colleagues as well. I mean, when I, you know, it was another, you know, we had a tough conversation tonight, but we got through it together and with the help of our administration and public input. And I just think moments like that are when this board really, you know, really shines and shows good governance. I thank everybody for that. And that's all I have. I did want to, Mr. Tatum, I just want to, you said tomorrow. I just want to make sure you're not coming tomorrow.
Oh, no.
It's Friday.
It's late. Friday, whatever. I got the call today for the meeting on Friday.
Friday morning, we'll be back here to do it again. Oh, and the update came out, I believe, from the superintendent this afternoon, and then a couple of media outlets began to cover it. But the school start time bill, it's being kind of misreported in the media, I've noticed already, in that the bill has not been repealed, but the conditions, you know, districts can explain why, you know, we're trying or we're planning. And so I guess this is a workshop request and not, not an immediate one, because I think we have until next summer to submit our idea to meet the legislation. But I just figured I'd get that out now to put that in future workshops so the board can kind of hash that out.
Absolutely. And as you said, the bill started as an outright repeal, then there was a substitute that was adopted to say, if you, you know, study the issue, and if you cannot meet the new, if you cannot meet the legislation and the times, then there'll be a report due to the Department of Education explaining why that can't happen. So that does mean that even if this bill is signed by the governor, and again, it's just passed in both chambers, so still have that executive process to go through, then, then, you're correct, Mr. Kennedy, we'll have a workshop topic. There will be opportunities still for the public to give us input and some, through some other structures as well. We've already brainstormed some forums, venues, opportunities to get that input.
Oh, good.
And to kind of get the board the information it needs to make a decision.
Yeah, because I think that was one of the, that's one of the legislative requirements, is you have to show that you have taken public input on the map. So you guys are already ahead of it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Glad to hear. Thank you. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Sure. So safety message is traffic again at Lakewood Ranch last couple, last month or so, two really nasty accidents out there. One that required a helicopter to fly in and take some people out. So when you get that feeling, like you're in a hurry, you know, and you get tense, and you're looking to, if I can get over to this lane, I can get there thirty-five seconds quicker. And those kind of thoughts start to happen, and that tension starts to happen. Just stay in the right lane, right, and just keep on going, and just calm down. Because I catch myself doing it, too, right? Like, I remember one meeting like a year or so ago, I was downtown, literally in Bradenton, right, like literally a mile down the road. And we had a five o'clock meeting, and I was meeting with someone. So at four-thirty, I left the meeting and got in my car. And I arrived here like thirty seconds before the meeting started. And all the time, I'm like, how can I get in the next lane? And how can I get over there? I was actually going to park my car in like some business and walk half a mile.
I almost did that tonight.
Yeah, you know. But the point is, when you, and I know what that feels like, I got to get there, I got to change lanes. If I can save fifteen seconds, just don't, just stop, right? Catch yourself. So that's the safety message. And then, yes, at McNeil, not only did they have the leadership event, which was really great, but they also had a speech contest, which I and Dr. Weisong and some other people were invited to be judges at. And I really know that public speaking, that's a weak area. We, you know, stem, 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 stem. And that's great, right? But we want the lights to be on. We don't want the buildings to fall down. But there's, you know, in the future, as an adult, when you move into the workforce, public speaking and writing and communication with other people, the higher you go in leadership, the less it becomes about your technical skills, and the more it becomes about your people skills. And so starting those skills early and developing them is a good thing. And so congratulations to Principal Wade and what happened at McNeil. I think that's a great idea. And if other schools want to do it, I'll raise my hand and go judge there, too. And those are the end of my comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Felton?
On Mr. Tatum's safety note, yes, if you're doing that, my husband will pull you over and give you a very large ticket because people die that way. So, yeah, he does that regularly. So I'm going to say a tail onto that and say, yeah, please don't do that waving it out of traffic thing. That's bad. In the interest of brevity, Golden Herald Awards were fabulous. There were kids there. I didn't teach them, but I knew them on campus from Southeast High School and from other places. I knew them as well. And then kids that I taught their siblings. So that was just really nice. I got to connect with some of those kiddos while I was there and to see them. And these kids are freaking brilliant. Makes me wonder what I've done with my fifty years of my life, that these kids have accomplished more in eighteen years than I have in fifty. They're incredible. I have wrapped up all of my visits to all of the schools in my own district. Yay. That was my goal before testing started, because I don't want to, I don't visit during testing. I won't visit during testing. They've got enough going on. But I was able to visit Williams, Harvey, and Witt to wrap those up. So I'm ready to start again in the fall with everybody. Went to the ribbon cutting at Parish Community for the new building, the Student Media Festival, where kids showcased their very short movies that they made. And let me tell you, the ones from the little bitty kids are adorable. My favorite was a bird on a string that rescued people, and they had it flying around in their, it was so darn cute. Anyway, they were fabulous. These kids were great. Mr. Tatum and I both attended the FSBA School Finance 2.0, and I have learned buckets and buckets of information, which I'm still processing. And one last thing, I am on the School Health Advisory Committee. We meet three times a year. We met this week. Among the things that we do is put together goals for the coming year. We, this week, we put together questions that we thought would be valuable for principals, teachers, and staff to go out at the end of the year for a survey. And it's also a great way to connect with other community partners, because they come in from all over the district to meet there. And I will, not tonight, but give you a better rundown of some of the things that we've been able to accomplish at a later date. And the very last thing, because I'm a mom and can't help myself, happy twenty-third birthday to my eldest child, Indigo. Today is his birthday. He's working, I'm working, his dad is working. And so we celebrated it over the weekend. But happy birthday to him anyway.
Birthday. More birthdays.
Happy birthday. Yeah, more birthdays. Okay. I'll keep it kind of brief, but I want to say thank you to Mr. Rinaldi for taking the time to show me the rezoning program. That was very beneficial. I'm glad that I requested that we do go through that process so we'd have a better knowledge of how that all works. I attended the Boys and Girls Club event of Caribbean Nights. Mr. Omar was there, and it was a fabulous event. I'm telling you, it's probably one of the best I've attended. So I went to that. And also, a lot of the district staff went to Garden Angels banquet with me on April tenth. Ms. Singleton, Ms. Breslin, Ms. Johnson, gosh, trying to go around the table, Mr. Edwards, and a couple, another person from the PSE came down. And they did not know the whole circle of what they do with foster kids in a community. So I think they were enlightened a lot by that. The, I wanted to say the apprenticeship program, that was one of the first things I mentioned when I got on this board, is why don't we have apprenticeship programs anywhere with our high school students and our, and our local businesses? And if we have to go through the MTC to do that, I think that is a good avenue to do that. But I also want to make sure that the high school kids are involved, because some kids don't go to college, you go to jobs. And if there's a apprenticeship program, you never know, they might see an opportunity to go to MTC and apply to be the plumber, electrician, and whatever. So amputations, go, you know, do mentorship at a salon, I think would be a great idea as well. And, you know, there's, there's a cliche, bookworms and math nerds. I was never a bookworm. I was a math nerd. But once you leave the arena, you got to get all that stuff back.
No, Ms. Bray, you weren't a math nerd, you were a mathlete.
Oh, okay.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. Anyway, so, but yeah, it was a long meeting. I want to thank the board for allowing me to do what I did. I felt like the right thing to do. And to all the students that were here, I mean, that's a perfect example of why we're here, and achievements that they have made in such a short time in their life. Think about that. The achievements that they have done in a short time of their life are going to go a long way. And I'm happy to say that we're a part of that, too. So with all of that, I have nothing else. If anyone else has anything. If not...
Thanks to Laura and Danielle.
Yeah, thanks to the staff. Sorry to keep you here late, but I felt compelled to go ahead and go through the VPK program. So with that, thank you all for being here, and we are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you.